Martha's in her downtown loft office space.
I was gonna say, Marta seemed to have a stall in here.
Yeah. Industrial chic. I think she doesn't have her sound on.
Marta, can you hear us?
Doesn't look like it.
I think you're right. I, I think she's. I don't think she's hearing us.
Yeah, she realizes that.
For some reason, we've had problems with WebEx in our county system. I don't know why that is, but hopefully she can get it figured out.
Kind of goofy, because sometimes it'll ask you to, to sign on with your audio, but if you just go and open it up, you're usually fine, but it's confusing.
Well, we were on a WebEx yesterday, I think it was, for a while. So, you know, I don't know, it worked, but although yesterday it was giving me fits getting on.
Yeah, I'll text her and see if she needs some help.
We'll give a, just give a couple ones here then for Marta and hopefully Eric to join us back up again. Start this meeting on mountain time, of course.
I think I busted WebEx. I can't download my picture. I've done it. I have other pictures. Anyway.
I see County Administrator Jana Peterson is on as well. Hi, Jana.
Oh, here comes Marta.
Yeah, I see her.
Someone's at the beach. I can even see the wind blowing. Yeah. WebEx makes it look like you're in a commercial with your hair blowing. The gray do going, you know?
No, that happens to me on Zoom too, if I use a, a background. So, I don't use it. It's too distracting. Mayor Langston Trustee Miles just has to reboot his computer, he said.
Ah, okay. Marta, can you hear us yet?
I can always, if I had a number for her, I could always add her in.
How much snow did you guys get up there? Not enough.
You guys. We only got a couple inches here in town.
Well, it stinks. We got eight inches in Louisville.
Yeah.
Up here, it snows all day and we get an inch. It all blows down to Louisville. That's right. My rock skis have been punished this year. Good you have them.
I haven't made it up there yet this year. It, Eldora said, I don't remember when, last fall maybe, that for Nordic skiing on the weekends, it was going to be reserved for season pass holders. I never checked back to see if that was still the case.
I don't think so.
Yeah. They quit selling certain season passes pretty early, unfortunately.
They hope they'll wait, but the snow's been pretty good.
Well, then I might.
During the week though, because all the skate skiers come out.
I know, but I can't go during the week because I gotta be with my friends, Marta and Matt, all day long, every day.
You know, we could change that. Now that you started me thinking about. We should wait on weekends so we can go ski during the weekend.
Marta, can you hear us now?
I'm on, I just called in. I'm on my phone for some reason. The WebEx.
Great, thank you.
Marvelous. And I, I think I see all of our trustees in attendance. So, and I know Miranda says she started to record this. So, welcome to Netherlands, guys. Sorry that we can't do this in our typical fashion where we all get together in person and have a nice buffet from one of our local restaurants. But it's great to, great to meet with our commissioners, especially since we have our two new commissioners. And I mean, Matt, you're not even that old of a commissioner at this point. So, we have a lot of, a lot of new people involved and over half of our trustees were elected just last April. So, I'm really glad we could get together and sit down and chat to just kind of touch base with each other and let you guys know what's going on up here in Netherlands and hear about what's going on at the county, because I think we've had such a great relationship over the years. It's really improved, particularly over the last decade or so. Under some of the previous mayors and previous commissioners have really made a point of working well together, and I want to make sure we continue to do that going into the future. So, you know, I think let's start with some introductions, because a lot of us are kind of new to each other. And I mean, I'm Chris, I'm the mayor, and I think I actually know everyone here. So, I'll keep that short. But let me, let me hand this over. So, let's start with, you know, with our commissioners. Let's, you guys, introduce you guys, and then we'll bring it back and introduce our new members of the boards, if you guys want to say a couple, a brief something.
Well, brief something is, my name's Matt Jones. I'm a county commissioner for two years now. I used to be in the state senate and house and it's great to be in local government. Now, I've changed my tune, so you know, no, no unfunded mandates. And it's great. I agree. And I look forward to working with Ned. You know, it's a great community and a big part of Boulder County, so.
I'm Claire Levy, and obviously I got elected this November. So, new to the board, but really not new to county government and in that. I, I did, I did a lot of work in Jefferson County. I served on the board of POZAC back in the 90s. And so, that, that was really the way I got to know a lot of parts of the county really, really well. And then I was in the state legislature as well, representing House District 13, which includes Netherlands. And got to spend time up there at the Teen, Teens Inc. and the community center and and then I represented Gilpin County, and Gilpin County would always have their annual Democratic Party dinner in NAD. So, that was nice. But, but I just really value what you've tried to do in Netherlands with preserving your small-town character and, you know, really accommodating a lot of, a lot of different interests. And there are some people, you know, I've followed these conversations actually about the IGA way back when. A lot of people don't want sidewalks, don't want Netherlands to grow, you know, and then there are, there are people that have a different vision. And I, so I appreciate, you know, what you're trying to balance here. And, and also appreciate having a good constructive relationship with Netherlands. And, and it was really important to me when I was running to be able to walk the town with Karen and you, Chris, and before you had to go and, and have you, you know, show me some of the real challenges that you have right now with that, that one bridge. And, and that potential problem with, I'm a big fan of hiking out of the Hesse Townsite and skiing at Eldora, but I know that that puts a big burden on the town. And so, you know, I know that we have a lot of things that we could work on cooperatively together.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Martha Luchemin. I'm the county commissioner in District 2. Just want to check on my audio from my phone. Great, thank you. And so, I'm here in Longmont, and I was recently also elected to the Boulder County Commissioners Board, and I, my background is in banking, in finance, in real estate, in teaching, consulting, doing a lot of work around addressing equity in the terms of community needs. Looking at not only predatory lending in the state of Colorado and our region, that really affected our aging community as well as the monolingual, Spanish-speaking families. I've done some other consulting work for DOLA in regards to the Resilience of Barret Todos, which was the 2013 flood recovery. In several years after that, and did some work with Community Foundation Boulder County, just really working on community needs and how do we work with people instead of going to people and telling them what they, that they need to like what we've put together. And really have analyzed throughout that, the financial wealth gap. And also inequities around our own families from a teaching perspective, being in, in our local, one of our local school districts. So, I'm excited to bring this perspective to the board and be able to ask some questions that maybe have not been considered and work with all of our municipalities. I'm leading the Consortium of Cities and am really excited to be able to do some of that collaborative type of work from my background to support all of us together and make sure that conversations include even our mountain communities and all the little sectors around Boulder County that are super unique. So, I appreciate the invitation. I'm excited to hear what y'all are up to. I haven't been in, last time I was in a Netherlands town meeting, the topic of conversation was greenhouse. So, the, the different pieces of, of what we all are working on, right? So, I appreciate the invitation and glad to, glad to meet the rest of you.
Thank you, guys. All, and yeah, it's, I really enjoyed the times I've met with you guys up here and looking forward to it in the future. To have Mayor Pro Tem Jonathan Baumhofer. You want to introduce yourself, and then we'll just go through the trustees and kind of alphabetical order by last name.
Sounds good. Hey, y'all. I'm Jonathan Baumhofer. I was originally appointed to the Netherlands Board of Trustees, was that almost two and a half, three years ago, to fill a vacancy. Was crazy or stupid enough, if you look at it, to volunteer for reelection and ended up getting reelected. I really liked what a few had to say. I feel like town Netherlands trustees, the board, I've had a rude awakening over the past two and a half, three years. Came from perspective of town resident, grew up in town Netherlands, went to our local high school, elementary schools. And getting involved, I was originally a PROSAB. That's our Parks, Recreation and Open Space Advisory Board. That's how I started into townned politics and eventually got the interest to get onto the BOT and join in on these discussions. It's been a, it's been a pleasure. And it's been an honor to a certain extent, and it's been a challenge. So, looking forward to discussions tonight. Potentially, you know, about Netherlands' future, where we're situated within Boulder County. We face a lot of challenges up here, from affordable housing to an influx of, I guess, a lot of development coming from retirees and just folks in general looking to come and enjoy the mountains. And it seems that over the past 10 years, the town, at least citizens, are feeling the strain a lot more. So, just looking forward to talking tonight about how we can collaborate and glad to hear that there's already been a lot of discussions about issues we've had up here between town administrator and mayor. I'll pass it off here.
Alan?
Hello. Yeah, I've been on the town board since 2017. I was appointed and then elected. And I've been in Netherlands for about 11 years. Before that, I lived in Larrimer County for 30 years. And I was on the City Council of Fort Collins 20, about 25 years ago. And served for four years. Better than after that. And we had, in Larrimer County, we had a county commission that was distinctly different than the Boulder County Commissioners. And it's been really refreshing to be in Boulder County and have such a cooperative group with the same kind of environmental values that we have. And we have really benefited from the cooperation and the collaboration and, you know, things like sustainability grants, which we couldn't survive without. So, it's been really refreshing to have a great relationship with you county commissioners. And Claire and Matt, I met you previously in your previous reincarnations. I'm sure I was one of thousands who, who met you as your constituent. And Marta, welcome aboard, and it's great to be working with you. I'm looking forward to it. And, you know, I think as Jonathan said, we face a lot of the same challenges that everybody does in the state right now. Affordable housing, is it a premium? We've had this huge influx of people, overwhelming housing stock. And our roads and, you know, we're all dealing with transportation issues. We're somewhat insulated and isolated from that up here. But we are putting in a electric charger. We got a grant from the state for that and electrify. We're very fortunate to have service from RTD, and it has been cut back because of COVID. But it's a huge asset to have that transportation up here for people, many of whom have to commute to Boulder. And once it gets safe again, I'm sure they'll take advantage of that. So, I'm sure you're facing a lot of transportation issues as well. And I'm hoping, you know, we've been pretty lucky with our economy during COVID. We have such a huge influx of tourists. And our trails were absolutely overwhelmed this summer. And I hope that's not the case this coming summer. I mean, it's great to have all you folks up here. But not at the same time every day of the week, you know? And I'm sure, you know, with county open space, you saw the same phenomenon. And it's wonderful that people outside enjoying those things, but some of them don't know how to take care of it at the same time and do, do inappropriate things and leave inappropriate things. And that's something we all face. And we've had a lot of homeless issues up here with West Magnolia. And you folks in the county have done a great job of working with us and trying to solve some of those problems and providing a path forward for people who come up here without a home, try to live in the forest. Many of them are substance abusers or addicts of one sort or another. And we were able to connect up with county resources, which ended up benefiting a lot of those people. And that's been really helpful. We didn't have as many last summer, but I'm expecting we'll have the influx again this summer. So, and I think homelessness is something that's been kicked down the road to cities and counties. And I think Boulder County and the town of Boulder have been trying to deal with that, and we hope to continue to work with you on that. And I hope you can provide resources for those folks as you have in the past. So, anyway. Good, good to see you.
Thanks, Alan. Introduce yourself.
Okay. Hi, I'm Tanya. I've lived in Netherlands for 25 years, at least. I have a child in the school district, in the middle school. And so, I'm very invested in maintaining the character of Netherlands. Not becoming a bedroom community for Boulder, not giving in to sprawl, maintaining our open and wild spaces. And cultivating creativity, arts and sports within our community. And basically, just, I'm mainly here just to kind of keep an eye on things that I never really understood how town worked. And I know you can't really make changes necessarily unless you get involved. So, I was just kind of dipping my toe in to see if this is something that is impactful or not. And that's about it.
Thanks, Tanya. Lindsay?
Hi, everyone. My name is Lindsay Danforth, and I'm a GIS data-based administrator for the city of Greeley, which means I'm a data and map nerd. I've been involved in local government for over a decade. I, and I moved here to Netherlands in 2017, where my neighbors convinced me to be on the planning commission. And then I was elected to the Board of Trustees just last year. So, I love this town, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Lindsay?
Hi. My name's Eric Coomses-Mile. I've been in Netherlands since 2016, and I've been around the city, in Boulder County, since around 2008. I teach at the university, and I kind of fell into this work through all the community organizing that I've been involved with over the last, you know, over 10 years now. Starting a few nonprofits and working up here with the Mountain Forest of Peace, which has been around since 1985, and kind of working to build out mutual aid operations and, and educational events, and was convinced to run for this position by some, by some comrades. And, you know, won that seat in April of last year. And yeah, I'm really interested in, in making sure that, you know, what we do serves the residents of the town of Netherlands, that we're not pushing people out and that we're bringing people in and that we are, if we have to grow, that we grow sustainably, grow the mind towards providing, you know, critical services that I think are sorely lacking in mountain communities. I agree with, you know, everything that my colleague has said so far. So, that, that really would be my addition to that, is that we, transportation is, you know, extremely important, but also safety. And I don't think that we are necessarily living in the safest possible way as it is now, and that we can do better. And so, I hope that we can start to build some relationships with you folks to ensure the safety of residents, provide critical services, make sure that people are taken care of appropriately. I know Netherlands has, you know, higher poverty rate than a lot of the county. I know we're at somewhere around 18%. And so, people up here do struggle, and I think there are better ways that we can serve them.
Thanks, Eric. And last but certainly not least, Julian.
Yeah, I'm Julian Taylor. I'm doing research for a book that is at least partly about politics, and as a result, I was dared to run for the Board of Trustees. I accidentally won. And so, here I am. And it's partly research for the book. I'm able to eat because I'm a software developer for Rosetta Stone, and in my spare time, I'm advocating for electric vehicles and writing about politics and business. And, and I, I also look forward to speaking with all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Yeah, I, so that's, that's who we are, and really looking forward to working with you guys. So, the goal for this evening was really just to get to know one another and talk about some of the things we've done together in the past and directions that we have for collaboration in the future. I know some of the trustees brought up projects that we really want to work on, things of concern to us. But, you know, it's, it builds on this history of collaboration that is so strong between Netherlands and the county. Everything from the policing contract that we have, that allows us to have 24-hour policing through the Boulder County Sheriff's Office and the nighttime policing. Just in the last year, you know, the, the COVID response, the, the work we, the, how appreciative we are, we are of Boulder County Health and bringing COVID testing up here, and also the county and the distribution of CARES funding. And looking forward to, you know, the next batch, which our congressman has been ushering through Congress through the, the, oh, I've forgotten what it's called in this round, but CARES 2, whatever they're calling it this, this year. And then big, the bigger projects, the things we've been working on for a while, the wildfire mitigation, hazard mitigation. This is a, leads into one of our big projects that we're, we're working on now actively with the county and want to continue to, is the Big Springs Egress. That's one of our big concerns, that, you know, Big Springs being the, the large neighborhood on the south side of Barker Reservoir that has only one route in and out, or, you know, actually has two roads, but they're all on the western side of the subdivision. And just on the other side of the road from West Mag, the, the recreation area. So, we're very concerned about reality for, you know, wildfire that starts to the west of town and traps the neighbors, the neighborhood, where they don't have an egress route. And so, we've been working with the county with Planning Department, Division and the Parks Department very well to help work on those plans to try and build an egress and look forward to continuing to do so in the future. And of course, you know, some of the successful ones, Tunston Village, you know, that is, that was huge this year, opening that up with the affordable housing. We got a lot of Netherlands residents into affordable housing. So, we're really appreciative of that work. And we, it's just, you know, it just goes on and on with the work through Peak to Peak Health and Human Services and NISH, which I think Alan mentioned, the homeless efforts. It's just, it's been an incredible relationship between us and the county and really looking forward to continuing that. And so, you know, it's kind of a open ideas is, what are the projects? What, what directions of the county, are you guys speaking here to the commissioners in particular? Like, what kind of projects are you guys working on that, you know, that we should be aware of, that there's a potential for collaboration coming up in the next year or two? Or, and then also with the trustees, if there are any other things that didn't bring, that weren't brought up. I'm just trying to, it's hard to do these open discussions on Zoom, as we all know, but trying to do it without me, you know, being the gatekeeper. So, Commissioner, is there, are there, you know, other projects or other places you see for collaboration that we haven't, that I didn't touch on or that we are coming up?
You know, I don't, I don't know about projects per se, but Karen and I were just chatting before we got started about both of us being on a Dr. Cog call together. And you know, as I, as I really get my legs under myself there on Dr. Cog and transportation funding, you know, hopefully I can help be an advocate for your transportation needs in, up in NAD. You know, I think what, I think it was Alan expressed about the incredible pressure on, on our public lands. And I don't think that, I don't think when COVID abates, I don't think that's going to go down. I think what people have discovered is how important it is for their mental health. And, and I, you know, I think the, you know, the Hesse Shuttle has been, I believe, a success. But I think, okay, I see thumbs up, but, you know, I don't, you know, maybe we need to be able to do more and to help people, you know, we use the wilderness area in a responsible way. And, and, you know, that obviously involves the, the Forest Service as well. And, and then, you know, Tunston Village comes up, I think, every time we have a conversation about Netherlands. So, like, more, how, how can we do more of that? And I know that project took a long time to plan and, and because it's a big project. And, but it's been a big success. So, you know, what, what can we do? We want to, I guess, one thing I've been really impressed by every time I go by it is that from the road, it doesn't feel as big as it actually is. And I know that that's a big concern. You know, you don't want big projects because you're a small town. So, how can we help you with your affordable housing needs without, you know, making, you know, doing development that might be out of character with, with the town itself? I know Marta and I both spent time with the Peak to Peak Human Services Alliance. I'm sure Matt has as well. And, you know, really learned through them and as well as attending a couple of lunches at the community center with the senior population, what the challenges are of, of, you know, aging up in the mountains where transportation is difficult, where services are remote. So, I don't know, there's, there seem to be a lot of things to work on together. And, you know, I think we just have to be on the lookout for those opportunities and, you know, have good communication with our staffs or between your staff and our staff.
So, I'll jump in. Alan, you, you and I probably have a common friend in Kelly Olson in Fort Collins. I met Kelly in 1994 when I helped them pass their open space tax. After I helped Boulder County pass its 93 open space tax, I worked at City of Boulder Open Space and Mountain Park for 18 years. So, anyway, I just wanted to mention that the Big Springs access, where is that? I was, if you, if you all probably remember this, I was concerned about going up the drainage for environmental reasons. And the other route to the east had far better visibility. If you were going to make the choice and a fire front's coming at you, you could see what you're getting into and not in that drainage. You couldn't see a thing with all the lodgepole pine up hill from you.
Can I, can I speak to that?
Tanya is on our, our committee for this. Yes, please go ahead, Tanya.
I mean, I can send you a Google Map link exactly showing where it is, but basically, if you have a Big Springs drive and go about a mile down on Find the Doughchill Street. on Find the Doughchill Street, it's just adjacent to that. And it's a trail system that connects to Magnolia. And I would love if someday we could do a field trip and you guys could actually see what we're talking about, you know, with feet on the ground. I think there's just no substitution. And I do, I was certainly one of the people that wrote about concerns regarding the wetland and how that really is part of the open space that's incredibly special and unique for this region. So, and Richter also agrees with that. So looking for alternatives that avoid the wetland is, is what we're trying to do. And I would love, anybody wanted to go for a walk there, it doesn't have to be like a big group. I'm available anytime for that because I live in that neighborhood and I take my dog up there every day. So just reach out to me if anybody wants to see it. And I could show you the first route that is no longer necessarily in clay and the upper route, which is up on the ridge, which is what Richter really wants. And then there's also a route off of, oh my gosh, what's it called? Wildwood. Yeah, that goes to Magnolia too. That's ideally, I think both are desired, but that's my take. If someone can also say what they want to say, of course.
So I want to say, Commissioner Jones, just to answer your question specifically, what trustee Tanya Corvalan is speaking to is that instead of having the trail go through the wetland, which was what was originally proposed, working with the fire chief and the towns engineer, we saw that we could raise the trail to be up above that, which is what Tanya is referring to when she talks about the higher. It's still in that very same area, but it comes up and out of the, of the wetland, which is what we remember was, was a big concern of the commissioners and specifically you.
But I do want to say it still has issues. So I know that they're still working with some of the neighbors to access their driveway because there is no avoiding the wetland. There's just some better routes that get you to safer ground and that are more strategic for firefighting. That would be up high, but that's just fine.
Yeah, when I, I used to do wildlife firefighting work. And when I saw that, if I had to make a choice to go up that drainage, I don't know if I would.
No, it's, yeah.
From the side of the hill and you can see towards prevailing wind, you have a much better chance of.
Yeah, and that area is getting cleared up with Forside Two project regardless, even without this. So that is going to be a nice fire break, but it doesn't connect to the neighborhood unless we do the road.
Great.
Anyway, anyone wants to walk it, just hit me up email.
Alan.
Yeah, that is an important issue and I hope we can resolve it with you folks. Funding is a huge issue because of, because a different issue I wanted to bring up before I forget is I think we have a mutual goal of net zero waste and dealing with things like recycling and composting. And I was disappointed to see all the opposition you've had to the composting location that you chose down there. You know, we've had some success with composting. Unfortunately, fortunately, you've been providing us with a composting drop off at our transfer station. And it's usually heavily used, if not full. And of course, the big challenge with composting is finding a means and access for restaurants who have the potential for a lot of composting. And so, you know, trying to figure out, we've been, we have a sustainability coordinator named Garrett McDaniel, who's been doing a fantastic job, thanks to you, you, you gave us a sustainability grant that covers half of his work. And he applied for some net zero planning grants and got turned down twice. So I think if we can partner with you on potential solutions, great. I think, you know, the good news is Boulder County, Boulder, Nederland, most of Boulder County, we're doing much better than the state when it comes to waste diversion, recycling and composting. The state's a dismal failure and we're doing pretty darn well. So I hope you can continue with that success and figure out a solution where we can work together on things like composting.
Just wanted to jump in, in a couple of things. One, we can't discuss the specific compost facility that's happening because it's currently a quasi judicial matter. So I don't want to dismiss what you're saying, but I also just want to make it clear for everybody why we won't be jumping in on that conversation. So thanks, Alan. I think the bigger conversation is around the cooperation and just collaboration. The county commissioners along with, with Netherlands. And I don't have specific, I didn't come to this meeting with specific things that I wanted to see happen. I really want to make sure that other, other folks who are maybe participating in the community that we haven't heard from get an opportunity. This is their chance to share some ideas or thoughts that we may not have discussed yet. If there's something else that didn't fall under one of the bigger umbrellas of housing or transportation, et cetera, that, that we could hear about, or if there's even some of our trustees that didn't, didn't get a chance to share something that may have just popped up in their minds. So we're here to hear from you.
So this is trustee Taylor. I just thought I'd note that I certainly greatly appreciated contributions from Boulder County Health. I've been conducting way, way more meetings than I want to on the topic of ordinances for marijuana here in Nederland. And Boulder County Health has been a tremendous help, providing an awful lot of very good, very useful information.
I'm glad you got that.
So that's just a thank you.
Yeah.
That's good to hear.
Oh, excuse me, around the issue of COVID, I heard someone talk about the testing. It might have been you, Chris. Around the vaccine, are there specific things that you're hearing in your, in, you know, in the Netherlands community that we should be aware of, that we could pass along with our priority population group that's really working on the vaccine and/or the public house when we meet with them?
Lot of call for a mountain vaccination setup somehow, whether it's a mobile vaccination or along with the COVID testing at our community center on Thursday afternoons. If there were some opportunity so that those who are, I guess it's now 65 and above in our community who are eligible for the vaccine could get it locally instead of having to go down to Boulder. You know, just both for the need, you know, the desire to not have to drive down the canyon or get arranged transportation, but also just for the fact that, you know, if you're going into older community hospital, if you're going into one of the vaccination lines, it's more exposure than some people are comfortable with. So if there's anything we can do to, to facilitate or to hurry along the idea of a mountain vaccination station, or even if it is just once every couple of weeks, have an opportunity to have those mobile vaccinations up here. I think that would be, it's something we've heard a lot from our community members as a need and a desire. And then not that one, that's not one, that's one, something that serves not just Netherlands, but the entire region. You know, that's one of those things where we discovered in the 2013 floods particularly that Netherlands is the hub for everything, you know, from basically, you know, Gilpin County, Central City Blackhawk, all the way out of Springs, all the way up to Allen's Park with, you know, Ward and Jamestown, where the place people can get to along the peak to peak. And I think if there were an opportunity to be vaccinated up here, we would see a lot of Boulder County from, from the northern parts of the county along the peak to peak coming to town for that opportunity. So that's a big piece of it.
Yeah, that's helpful. And we do have mobile, mobile clinics that are in, in the works as far as planning. So we'd be happy to pass that along in, in that question. And it might make sense, I appreciate you sharing the Thursday afternoon because if that's kind of when people have been already accustomed, then I think it makes sense to at least notate that in there and see if that might be a, there might be an opportunity there. So that's great. Tanya, were you going to jump in on that?
Okay.
I was going to say, you know, some of the newer vaccines that don't have to be chilled by liquid nitrogen, you just leave them outside up here and it's cold enough, you know? So it's particularly good to make this the hub of vaccination for the county.
Right, you've got an advantage for the rest of the county.
Your beer in one place, vaccination next to it.
There we go, yeah.
If they do need the nitrogen, we've got a frozen dead guy, we can just pack him in there with him.
Yeah, I know that the county has made gas cards available for transport, so for volunteers, when a volunteer is drivers to bring people to their vaccination appointments. I know you guys have gas cards available, but I'll say that firsthand experience is very difficult to coordinate and very difficult to track down exactly who needs a ride and when they need a ride. And the $20 gas card isn't that much of an incentive really for someone to do it. In fact, it seems they'll just do it anyway if they were going to volunteer to do it without the gas card. And so while that program is appreciated and those opportunities are appreciated, at least I have been kind of unable to, to, to get that actually going from a, from an organizing perspective. So while things like that are, are good ideas in theory, I think stronger sort of organizing and tracking of people who, who need these resources because they don't necessarily come forward or they're not getting the communications.
And that's important feedback as well, Eric. So thank you.
Go ahead, Alan. Sorry, you ripped your hand.
Yeah, one other thing that's been going on for a while is solar energy for low income people. And you guys are doing a solar garden for that. And we're going to get in on it and we really appreciate that. We're trying to go to 100% renewable by 2025. And I don't think it's going to happen because of the, you know, we're tied to Excel and Excel isn't on that ambitious schedule, although they've had huge improvements in what they're trying to do. But anything else we can collaborate on for solar energy or renewable energy for low income folks would be appreciated. You know, unfortunately, a lot of the programs Excel offers, their customers are at a premium. If you want wind or solar, you pay extra, although they did have something called Renewable Connect. And we ended up with the highest percentage of people of anybody in their system signing up for it. And that is below cost of, you know, current energy. And, you know, as you know, wind and solar are cheaper than fossil fuels. And it's cheaper than our current mix. So anything, you know, we're all on the same page in terms of climate change and addressing that. And one way is partnering, continuing to partner renewable energy. So I want to thank you for that opportunity. It's a really great futuristic thing you're doing there. And, you know, low income folks are left out of the whole mix. There are very few people that can afford solar panels even to this day. So if we can figure out ways for renters or any kind of low income folks, and we have a lot of them up here, I think 30% of our population, according to Dave Pachimogi up here, I should say, 20% of our population pays 30% of their income for utilities. That's a huge chunk of their income. So anything we can do to partner on that would be, as we are now, greatly appreciated. So thank you.
Cheaper, cleaner, jobbier.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, and let me just say, so I, I wrote the original solar garden bill for, for the state, which was one, it was the first in the country. And one of the reasons I wanted to do it was for renters who pay their, pay their Excel bill or, you know, have a, have a utility bill, but can't, can't use solar themselves. So it is designed to be portable. If you have an account with Excel and you are able to get a share in a solar garden and then you move, you know, you can take it with you. But, but, you know, there is, there are still costs associated with that. It's not, it in and of itself is not a low cost option. So, you know, when the county can help subsidize it and then also, but Excel is required to make shares in solar gardens available to, to people who have low incomes and, and to make those that affordable. So, you know, it may be that somebody in the Colorado Energy Office or somebody in the PUC can help facilitate access that way. So.
Yeah, we are, thank you very much for that bill, Clarence. Greatly appreciated. And we're a member of CC4CA.
Oh, great.
We're advocating for EDHUTS, which is a study of community aggregation, allowing communities to buy their own energy without having to go through Excel. And I think the unfortunate thing about the solar garden thing with Excel is they limit the number of solar gardens. And we tried to get one years ago and didn't get chosen. So that was a disappointment. And, you know, it's just an artificial limit on renewable, access to renewable energy. So I think, you know, if we can team up and try to get more access and more of that available, that would be wonderful too. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
Jonathan, did you have something you want to bring up?
You know, I was, the topic of conversation being collaboration and looking into the future. Some things that have come up tonight have been, you know, the camping homelessness issue that has been kind of ongoing for any small town. Pretty much any state that is in the Rockies has forest, Forest Service or public lands. We've also seen a massive kind of overburdening of our public lands, whether it's Hesse, that's National Forest Service land. We've had issues that have been through collaboration, teamwork with the Forest Service, getting better and better each year on West Magnolia and that recreational space. I guess, sitting here with the county commissioners, I'm curious, is there any interest or willingness to potentially look at a recreation district that could encompass multiple counties? I know that while the Gilpin County Rec Center is now reopening, which is awesome to hear that they've managed to find grants and staffing and funding for pretty much the majority of this past year during the pandemic, Gilpin County lost their recreation, their community center, which was also their swimming pool and a very big community resource for them. And luckily within the town of Netherlands, we've been able to keep up our community center with limited capacity. And we've done an amazing job, kudos to our town staff of taking pay cuts and finding ways to get around the pandemic. But it has kind of shown during this pandemic that we have a vast array of recreational resources, public lands, open space, and not a very cohesive means of facilitating those lands. So we're even making them available to the public. It was kind of a, we've been working together to address the overuse and the overburden at Hesse, but Indian Peaks Wilderness is, I think, the most heavily used wilderness area in the, in the whole United States. And it's actually one of the most environmentally threatened wilderness areas due to its proximity to Boulder, Denver, the Front Range. And I've long seen a need within the peak to peak community for collaboration when it comes to recreation. We struggle in Boulder County with camping issues, you know, on Caribou, Magnolia, West Magnolia, over in Left Hand Canyon, Ruby Gulch, in Gilpin County, they struggle with them, in Gamble Gulch and many of those other areas up there. I'm not as familiar with Gilpin County, but we have similar issues and we're similar communities across the whole peak to peak, from Lions to Netherlands, Gilpin, Allen's Park. There's a lot of potential for collaboration if that's the discussion for tonight. I can't help but seeing the fact that most of our mountain communities are tourist towns or in some way or another dependent on the economic, basically the economic reality of tourism and recreation being the main tourism. And we also all have a strong belief in sustainability and environmentalism and preserving our public lands. And it seems to me that we would be far better able to serve those goals if we had a recreation district that spanned Gilpin, Boulder County. Basically, you're talking Estes out to Idaho Springs. If you look at the Western Slope, they have recreation districts that span multiple counties. And what this does is allow small boards like our boards and the county commissioners to focus on budgets and tasks like that while tasking a special district, a recreation district, with dealing with some of these other issues from a, from a different avenue. Recreation is why people seem to come to our mountains. It's, we've built economies around it and our goal is to preserve that recreation for generations to come. And yet we exist in silos. You have Gilpin County doing their thing here, Boulder County here, and each small town exists and it's on silo. If we can collaborate and in the, essentially Boulder County Commissioners was interested in going through a multi-year process, I believe there could be interest in the mountain community for revitalizing the idea of a recreation district. So I guess having you all here, is that something you would all be interested in looking at as a means of having a more concise and structured format? format and kind of, I guess, just a means of funneling funding, one, into these recreation facilities as well as cohesive vision and a means of actually manifesting that vision through action. Right now, we have a lot of nonprofits in the mountain communities that keep up either our trails or our recreation facilities. If you could introduce a recreation district, you then get programming. And we all know that the key to basically environmental success, environmental preservation is education. And I think we get education through program. So that's my little rant. I'm curious to hear from the commissioners. Are you interested in looking at it? I know from processes, it's about a two-year process that would be heavily involved of your time. And I'm before, you know, starting to gather folks in the mountains who five, eight years ago, kind of started going down this road. I'd like to hear if there's interest on your level.
So what we're doing now, we do have a thing called NOCO 2015, Northern Colorado 2015, came out of the Sports Journey Partnership, where Larimer, Boulder, Jefferson, Clear Creek and Gilpin Counties work together to try to manage the influx of visitors to these places. So on that scale, we're trying to work together to maybe have economies of scale to do things better. I also know that the fire chiefs are talking about a district, so you might want to talk to them for fire mitigation. This is news to me as far as a district. I hadn't thought of that. And there are other things that people have asked us to do that are tax oriented, too. And this is Boulder County. People support that kind of stuff often. So I'm happy to have a conversation about it and see the level of interest, but it will take a lot of work. And again, there are a lot of people that want to be, you know, we have the unpaid, the recruits and in subdivisions and under corporate subdivisions, we have transportation, we have housing, we have mental health. So there are a lot of people wanting to do that kind of stuff. But I see what your point is. People, you need, you need resources to do work on an area. And we can have a conversation. On homelessness, we've already kind of done that collaborative work, is my understanding. Trying to manage that with some success. So that's in there, too.
Yeah, I guess what I would add is I think the challenge is coming up with a shared vision for what you would want this district to accomplish. And I've seen some of these conversations in other jurisdictions kind of fall apart because you know, it would be a taxing district and and then, you know, you got to put a service plan together and and what do you really want to accomplish? Do you want facilities, rec centers with programming, you know, that kind of thing? Are you looking for parks? Who's going to benefit from them? So I think there would have to be a lot of conversations about you know, what people really want and you know, many times these things don't go forward because when when you get everybody together, you find out, well, you know, you you want better planning to prevent open space from being overrun and other people want more. They want playgrounds and ball fields and things like that. And and people can't get together. I'm thinking of a process many years ago up Turkey Creek. That that whole area down in there that just kind of fell apart because people didn't have a shared vision. But you know, if it's something that the community wants, you know, then, you know, and you can bring people together, then that's fine. I I I don't want to get out in front of my fellow commissioners, but I I don't think that we would initiate or lead that process. I think we would want to see that coming from community coming together and and, you know, after, you know, some intensive work and outreach saying that this is what you want.
We are five minutes from our regular business meeting. I just wanted to give a time check to everyone.
Yeah, and you had, you had the IGA on the calendar, which we haven't gotten to. And I think you know, we're not really prepared to talk about it because we we haven't, you know, had a briefing on that. But.
Well, I think, you know, I wanted, the reason I put the IGA on the agenda is, you know, we we signed it Boulder County and they're assigned an IGA 19 years ago, which expires one year from now. And, you know, previously, the, you know, members of our previous Board of Trustees had worked pretty closely with your planning department and with previous commissioners to start working down that path. But then about a year ago, COVID hit and suddenly it didn't seem all that important anymore. And then our boards all changed. You guys, two thirds of your board was elected in November, over half of our board in April. And so it was really just an opportunity. I wanted to put it on here as an opportunity to just bring it back into everyone's attention that the IGA has been successful between our communities over the last 20 years. And it's not something I think, I don't know, I have not asked the other trustees, but personally, that's not something I want to see just expire. I think, you know, I think that would be a mistake. I think that would be throwing away a lot of progress over the last 20 years. So it's the type of thing I don't want us to get to November, December. Oh, we've got three months to do this. So what I'd like to see is, you know, perhaps as an opportunity for our staffs to start the discussion again. Because I did, I knew that you guys hadn't probably hadn't heard a lot of the details, certainly a lot of the history and what we were working on. So I wasn't intending this to be a in-depth discussion of the IGA, but more just a reminder to both of our boards that that's something that's out there. And if it's something both boards are still interested in pursuing, we should probably start now instead of waiting for another nine months. So I think that's something we can let our staffs kind of take the lead on. And then also have discussions within our, you know, you guys have your discussion about it and we'll have our discussion about whether or not we want to proceed with it. And if so, in what direction?
So Chris, I think, for me, I do want to proceed and do renew, do a new IGA. We often have people with different minds when we work on things, and I'm sure you do, too. So it'd be great if the community kind of came together and said, this is kind of what we're thinking for to help that along.
Yep. You know, I always, I always like to say, you know, it's a, Netherland is a town of 1,500 people. So on any given issue, we have 2,500 opinions. So yeah, definitely. Look for finding those common grounds, but I, you know, and unfortunately, being sort of the bad guy here, as Karen said, we've got now three minutes till our board meeting begins. So just give you guys, is there anything, but I want to thank you guys for coming out tonight. I wish we could be doing this in person. And hopefully, maybe end of summer or something, we can have you guys up here and do this again and have a real conversation in person without just staring at little boxes.
That would be really great. I hope we can do that. And it's great to meet you all. And, you know, and I, I hope we do pick up the IGA conversation, because I think on the whole, it's beneficial, you know, we'll we'll, we'll have some certainty to what happens in the future. So.
Thank you all for hosting us.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both so much.
All right. Bye bye. Take care. Enjoy your meeting.
Thanks. You're welcome to stick around if you want to hear what we're talking about.
I've done it all day.
Miranda, I'm correct in thinking that it's the same link for our next meeting. We don't have to log back up and in. Okay. I didn't double check that before starting this evening.
We have a new weird situation, too. When Cynthia logs on, it shows me twice. And so I can't stop the recording because now the recording is on her side. So the recording is just going to go straight through.
I'm not trying to usurp her power, but I show up as her. I apologize.
I don't know why it is, but every time I try and start a meeting and I start this WebEx link from the, from, from the link in the agenda, it tries to log me in as Miranda as well. And I have to go and put my own name and email address. So.
Do you maybe walk Cynthia through how you're doing that? Because she's, it's causing the same issue for her.
It's just, it's like the pop-up window. Right before you join, it says, who are you? And it has it all pre-filled out with Miranda's information. But I can just change it there and it seems to work. So I don't have to get any menus. It's like blindingly obvious.
I can try to do that. It just sort of throws me into the meeting. But if I get an opportunity, I'll give that a shot, Mayor, because it's kind of strange to show up as somebody else. So I'll duck off this meeting and try to log back in and see what happens. Hopefully that doesn't mess anyone up. Miranda's still here as the We'll try it. See how that works.
No, I'm like sitting here Googling. I'm like, I don't know how to fix this issue.
Yeah, and because it's almost I have the I have the chance to leave the meeting or to end it. So we're not, I'm just gonna.
All right, we'll just give a couple more minutes here to the people who might be taking a little gap between our or we kick the next one off.
I saw Miranda's name very quickly and changed it. Go ahead, Miranda.
I'd say I might just have to reach out to WebEx tomorrow.
Do you want to send me the link and maybe you can try it not from the agenda? I don't know if anyone else is having this issue.
Are you trying, have you clicked on it from your calendar?
I clicked on it from iCompass and.
Click on it from your calendar. And see if that makes a difference.
Okay, sorry to create problems. I'm going to try this again.
The problem is in the technology, not the user.
I agree.
If the user is misusing the technology, it's because the technology's user experience is faulty.
Oh, well, Cynthia tries to log back in as somebody other than Miranda. I'd say we we call this meeting order. I think we've got everyone in attendance. So if Miranda, if we're still recording, so if you would simply call the roll for the Board of Trustees meeting.
Mayor Larson.
Here.
Trustee Taylor.
Here.
Trustee Apt. Trustee Coombs Ismail. Trustee Coombs Ismail, are you there? Come back. Mayor Proton Baumhofer.
Here.
Trustee Danforth.
Here.
Trustee Corvallin.
Here.
And Trustee Coombs Ismail, are you there? I see him. I see his name. I don't. Trustee Coombs Ismail, are you there? Mayor Larson, I don't know if you want to proceed and I'll sit down where he is.
I think, I think we will. He's, he's still on mute and his camera's off, so. Don't know if he's just stepped away for a little bit longer or has had a computer crash. Nope, his video's back. Eric, are you with us? All right. He did a thumbs up.
Okay.
All right, so roll call is completed. We have two items on the consent agenda tonight that warrants some minutes. If any trustees have questions, comments about the consent agenda or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Miranda?
Mayor Proton Baumhofer.
Yes.
Trustee Coombs Ismail.
Yes.
Trustee Apt.
Yes.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth. Trustee Corvallin.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Very good. Consent agenda passes. Before we tackle the meat of the agenda this evening, we'll open this up for, open up the floor for public comment on anything that is not on our agenda this evening. So if anyone from the public would like to speak on any matter, now would be your opportunity. And I see one hand up. So we'll begin with Ben Goldsmith. Try to raise your hand within the WebEx, turn on your video, wave your hands, start speaking when no one else is, somehow catch our attentions and you can have three minutes. Once you have identified yourself and let us know if you are a town resident or not. Ben, the floor is yours.
Hi there, Ben Goldsmith, 496 Spring Street in Netherland. I'm also joined here, someone else is going to share my comment with me. But I'll introduce myself. As said, Ben Goldsmith, I staff the Netherland Communities That Care Coalition's Prevention and Youth Opportunity Initiatives. Our coalition is focused on making Netherland a healthier place to grow up by supporting wellness and education and creating opportunities for young people. And one of the young people who's involved in the coalition is joining me. I think she's going to speak up here for a second.
Yes, hello, I'm Megan and I'm a senior at Netherland Middle Senior High School and I'm also a member of the Youth Academy, which is a youth-led organization that is part of the Netherland Communities That Care Coalition.
So we're both here to tell you about one of our coalition's initiatives. Data collected here in Netherland found that opportunities for young, for youth pro-social engagement are relatively scarce in our community. Research also shows that those kinds of opportunities for young people help young people make better choices and avoid risks related to mental health and substance use or misuse. Which can, yeah, these, so so these opportunities for social engagement act as reduce the impact of risks that that young people face in the community. To help address that gap between the needs of Netherland's youth and the availability of opportunities for civic participation, internships, employment and recreation, we're working on building a Youth Opportunity Advisory Board. The purpose of that board is to engage our civic institutions as well as their peers with the goal of advocating for and promoting youth opportunities, those opportunities I was just referring to. Megan, you had something?
As it happens, parallel to our initiative, Netherland Middle Senior High School is initiating a career and technical education approach in the school, and we hope to support the creation of real-world opportunities for students to develop their skills here in town rather than needing to go other places. Our goal is to have this youth board up and running by early next school year.
Yeah, so with that, we envision this youth board working really closely with the Board of Trustees in support of their mission. We hope that the board will do whatever is practical to make space for youth voices and town discussions and processes. And I want to assure the board that our coalition has substantial capacity to staff that kind of thing. But we will, but we will still need the town government of Netherland as an ally in order to succeed. And we only have a couple of seconds. I'll let Megan finish up.
So we ask you to work with us and make this initiative part of your conversations in the coming month or so. And would be happy to provide the board with a more detailed outline of this initiative in writing and present an update at a future meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Megan. I think we'd definitely like to see that proposal and would really look forward to working with you guys in any way we can in the future.
I've got.
Yeah. Who is that?
Yeah, it's Rick Henrickson from the Fire Department.
All right, Rick, you're up.
Yeah, just real quick, we've had two fires so far this winter that were started as a result of improperly disposed of fireplace or wood stove ashes. One, a month or two ago, resulted in the loss of a Uh, one, uh, a month or two ago resulted in the loss of a garage. Uh, one more recently was, uh, fortunately much less damaging. It was a couple of tires and some piled wood, but just a reminder, um, one or two days in a fireproof container is not enough. Um, a week's probably good. And if you can dump it into a snow pile even after that, all the better. So just a reminder. That's all.
Important reminder. Anyone else from the public like to weigh in or speak on any item? Oh, there we go. Uh, Kathleen. Ms. Chipai? See your hand up.
If, if she is unable to, she did send it to, to me, uh, via email, the comment she wants to make tonight in addition to the other comments she sent. So I could go ahead and read that for her. Okay, it says Kathleen, uh, Chipai, 30-year East Magnolia resident, 17-year business owner. The town calendar hasn't had a meeting of any kind posted on it for the last year now, so I'm wondering why the calendar stopped being used and then when that will be utilized. So the public can actually see what meetings are occurring. The town homepage news feed is nice, but not an organized or efficient way to communicate with the public or encourage them to participate. The day alone, the link to the E2030 subcommittee meeting says February 24th through March 2nd. And yet, when I arranged my schedule to make the 5:00 PM meeting today, I found out it was canceled and postponed only because I emailed the clerk at 5:00 PM when the meeting had not started. The link on the website news feed still says 5:00 PM today like it did when I reconfirmed it last night. There is no public notification of the cancellation or change. It would seem the calendar would be useful or helpful for the public. And the BOT meeting news feed for today says Board of Trustees Meeting Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021. BOT meetings normally start at seven, except today, a significant meeting started at six with the Boulder County Commissioners that included the IGA. Please join us for the Board of Trustee meeting on Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021. The meeting will start at 6:00 PM with a joint session between the Board of Trustees and Boulder County Commissioners. The regular meeting will begin at 7:00 PM. Both meetings will be held virtually through WebEx and are open to the public. And there was no notation on the link title that would have alerted anyone to this early start meeting with the Boulder County Commissioners. Had these meetings been on the town calendar that has been blank for the last year, perhaps attendance, participation would be larger and perhaps the public like myself, who would tend to attend these meetings would not get pissed off over the dysfunction in communicating public meetings with the public. Because the town calendar isn't being utilized, I was ready for a meeting at five that was canceled and no notice of it when it was canceled. And then I was late for the 6:00 PM BCC meeting. The community Senator Cat Center calendar has been functioning normally.
Okay. Anyone else in the public like to speak on anything?
This is David Seis, uh, at 101 East Second Street. Um, I meant to talk about this at your previous meeting and included a, a link, uh, to a document about ned pets. And specifically, there's a berm that goes, uh, across the intersection of Second and Snyder that sweeps all the water off the street and dumps it, uh, to the flood prone north side of the street. And that berm was originally committed to be temporary. And, uh, I'd like to, uh, see what we can do to get it removed. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Anyone else like to speak? Not hearing or seeing any further. Nope. All right. Uh, thank you all very much for your comments. We'll move on to our informational item this evening, which is going to be introduced by Miranda before I think, believe being handed off to Safield.
Might change some things around on the screen to get to this PowerPoint. That I believe you can see. Okay. Wonderful. So tonight we are going to do a presentation regarding the chain 2018 building code changes. That presentation is going to consist of Dan Wester and Emily Richards from Safield. And then our 2018 Building Code Administrative Committee will step in as well. So I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Dan and Emily to get us started.
Sounds good. Thank you guys for having us here this evening. Um, we appreciate this opportunity to talk about some of the changes. Um, some of the benefits of moving to the 2018 codes. Uh, Miranda, can we, can I switch just you? Okay. So, uh, new codes, new year. Go ahead and switch to the next one. So first thing we want to talk about is in the 2018 codes, they have pulled out all of anything that has to do with a pool and spa and made it its own book. So we're proposing, of course, that, um, Netherlands adopts the 2018 International Pool and Spa Code, uh, because that will need to be included now in your code adoption, since now it's completely separate than what used to be in your books. So we want to make sure that gets included in your codes. We can move on. Thank you, ma'am. These next couple of slides, Dan and I will both talk about. Um, there was a big change in the wind speed in the 2018. Um, wind speed used to be based on a three-second gust. And now it's based on what's called an ultimate wind speed. And there's a couple of different ways that you can determine these. Um, this particular one, we've, uh, pulled a couple of map studies and they do them over like 100-year occurrence, what's the strongest wind gust? 700-year occurrence, what's your strongest wind gust? So currently in Netherlands, wind speed is 130 miles per hour. In this particular, uh, diagram, you can see that Netherlands is in between the 140 and 150 wind speeds. So that's why we have put 144 mile per hour wind speed we'd like to suggest. Now, if we go to the next slide, this is just an example. This is the 100-year occurrence. This takes it to 168 miles per hour. Um, so that's a significant increase. And then if you'll go to the next slide, please. Boulder County puts Netherlands in the 175 mile per hour category. So again, these are all based on different, um, wind studies that are all out there. Um, we are recommending the 144 mile per hour for a couple of different reasons. Um, number one, it's not a huge jump from the 130 to the 144. Um, therefore that's not a huge increase in your cost to our homeowners or contractors. Um, it's also very difficult to get building materials, roofing materials, um, wooden building materials that are going to withstand 175 mile per hour, even 168. So we feel that the 144 is, um, it is very adequate for, for this area. Of course, we've given you some options to look at. Um, but if you have any questions, let us know, but, uh, that's why we're recommending, um, the 144. Uh, Dan, do you have anything you'd like to add on those? I'm going to say no, so let's move on.
Dan is still muted if he did. So Dan, up here. There we go. Oh, Dan, we can't hear you.
He's unmuted on the app, but not in. We can't hear anything you're saying, Dan.
We're still not hearing you.
Well, when he jumps on, he can, he can add in. Let's, um, let's go ahead and move on. Cause I know we've got a lot of people that also need to cover. Um, one of the other benefits of the 2018 code, um, before the stud height size didn't exceed 10 feet. So it has now taken into account the fact that, you know, homeowners, contractors, they want to build the big, beautiful ceilings. Um, so it's been more user-friendly. Um, they've extended those heights, those sizes, the tables that they have included are going to be much easier for your homeowners to read. The International Residential Code was written specifically for homeowners. So the 2018 has added a lot more that's made it easier for the homeowners. And this is one of the things, the tables that they've added, the charts. So this is one of the things that's also been added in the 2018. We think will be very beneficial there in Netherlands. And then if we go to the next one that also goes with this up in Netherlands, you know, people like to build log homes on occasion. And with the 2018, it now allows the log homes to meet the requirements of that building thermal envelope um, by complying with the ICC 400 standard. And that's just the ICC 400 standard. That's the standard for building a log home. And they can now use that. And of course, the building thermal envelope is going to go towards, um, that energy efficiency. So that's another nice feature that's added in the 2018 where they work together nicely. And we can go on. Please and thank you. So in the International Residential Code, there are several appendixes, uh, appendices that are, um, in the back. There are several that we've listed here. The thing about the appendices is if you don't adopt them, you can't use them. So some of them that we've listed here, they're the ones you're hearing about a lot. So like Radon. You're hearing a lot about Radon right now. So these are ones we want you to look at. We want you to talk about. Um, you will need to decide which appendices you want to adopt, which ones you want to leave out. Again, if you choose not to adopt one, you can't later use it. Um, so that's why we want to make sure and bring this to your attention now instead of later. Um, and then again, it's, it's what's going to be best for your community, how you want to move forward. I know, um, some people have been taking courses on the light straw construction and those sorts of things. So if that's something your community wants to move forward with, um, you might want to look at adopting it. Therefore, it's at least there to use later. We'll move forward. So every code cycle, um, the exclusion of the square feet of your detached structures. So if a shed is under 200 square feet, it does not need a permit. Well, every code cycle, they move from 120 square feet to 200, back to 120 to 200. We don't know why they do it. They just do. And so one of the nice things about the 2018 is it's going to stay on 200, just like you were in the 2012. Uh, one of the nice things about that is the consistency. Um, you know, a neighbor that built a shed last year is going to be the same as a neighbor that builds a shed this coming year. And so there's that consistency, um, not going back and forth. And then this is going to go along with the next slide that we have here. This is in your planning and zoning code about the relocation of existing structures. Um, right now, um, it shows that it recommends excluding the relocation of structures that are less than 120. And we recommend that you change that to 200 square feet to match the IBC and IRC. Again, it's just a recommendation if the 120 was there for a specific reason, but I'm guessing it was probably just not changed with one of the code cycles. Um, I could be wrong, but that's, this is one of the things we'd like to recommend. So somebody's moving their shed from one house to another. Are they going to have to get all the permits and all of that for a small shed they didn't need a permit for in the first place? Um, that's what this is speaking to. So these next ones, we're going to get into the energy code. I know that's what everybody's been asking for. Everybody wants to know what is the price? What are we doing? Um, what's this going to cost us in the new energy codes? So as you can see, these are the, uh, ceiling, the insulation R values through the years. And as you can see, they have been pretty consistent throughout the years. So there's not going to be a huge jump in cost, a huge change in what your homeowners, your contractors are going to go have to go find or have to go do. Um, Dan, are you able to get on yet?
Can you hear me?
Perfect. Yes. I'm going to have him explain a little bit more about our 2018 numbers.
So the, the, the big number here that they've monkeyed with is the above grade walls, uh, framed walls above, um, your basement. Um, it used to be an R21 in the cavity. And now they've given us an option to do an R20 in the cavity. And, um, that would be your bat insulation stapled between the studs. And then they're asking a plus five, which, um, the first number is obviously the interior thermal envelope, um, where your batting is stapled. And then the plus five accounts for your sheer wall, meaning your plywood, your Tyvek, which is a house wrap for your air barrier. That accounts for some of it, maybe siding, maybe brick. So it's pretty easy to pick up that extra five points. Or then, and that R20 is pretty, uh, common for two-by-six frame walls. And we do realize that, um, there's still some framing out there with two-by-four walls. So that's where the R13 comes in. Um, that's pretty standard for a two-by-four wall where you can actually get an R15. But then they ask you to pick up the other 10 points with the exterior products. And there could be a trade-off. Spray foam is about, uh, maybe R8 per inch. So if you did it all with a spray foam to get to a 25 or 23, depending on your two-by-four, two-by-six walls, um, that's how you get there. But they're asking, and it's pretty easy to find the, the energy compliance of a house wrap and your siding and what value that adds. And all of our homes already have it. Um, they're just asking on our plan view that we, we look for that. So not a big change.
And in the next couple of slides, they're just kind of examples so that you can see the insulation. So what does that look like? So the R49 there as opposed to the R21, you know, what does that look like? What is that giving you?
Yeah, we picked up these slides, um, to try to show, like we talked about, um, an R21 in a two-by-six, uh, wall. It's six inches deep. Um, and then the R49 is the requirement in an attic um, in Netherlands, in our climate zone seven.
And then the next one is just going to show the difference between your continuous insulation. That's what you're going to see in your basement versus your cavity insulation, which you'll see upstairs. So just the two different kinds of insulation. Again, just talking towards energy, uh, not a huge difference, um, but they've offered some, some give and take, which is really nice. And then again, with energy, the window U factors. Um, as you can see, the numbers have gotten lower. Lower means more energy efficient. So the 2018, we've dropped two points to point 30. Again, not a huge change. Skylights have changed, uh, have stayed the same. Uh, if you please go to the next slide just to show you an example. So this is what we're looking for, for the U factor. When you, when a new window comes, it's going to have this sticker. What most windows we're seeing, we're seeing a point two-seven right now. Um, the majority of windows that we see being as replacements or being new, they're at the point two-seven. So this is not going to be a change. It's not going to be difficult. Um, this is pretty much standard and what people are already installing at this time. So again, another nice thing that's, people have already moved to that, um, that you factor, and that's what they're comfortable with. So that's what's kind of nice about this at this point. And our next one, we're going to talk about PVs. I believe this is the last one in our set. Um, so PV systems, um, they have their own chapter in the International Residential Code, but we're seeing more and more reviews come from Netherlands. You know, people want something more energy efficient. You know, people want something more energy efficient, want something they can use. But there's lots and lots of training out there. So we have highly trained electrical inspectors that have been taking training on this. They're doing excellent reviews, good inspections. So we feel that we're providing really good product for you guys when we come and look at these systems. You know, they're getting better and better every year.
I will comment on that wind slide that I was trying to chime in on. We have chosen to go with the 100 year. Yeah, back up two more slides. So this one is the 100 year, as she was saying, and that puts us between 140 and 150. We built some affordable housing in the climate zones seven. And we had some conversations with federal monies, federal engineers. They just want to see where we compile their information from. And I'm comfortable with this 100 year occurrence to tell them that we are using 100 year occurrence map, the wind studies by ASCE 10. And we can show them our math on this. The next slide is the 700 year. If they want to push it to a higher wind speed, I would ask them to show us why they would want that. And this comes, this conversation was spurred out of the affordable housing and some subsidiary money that they're getting for it. So like Emily was saying, to build a home, the IRC is set up to build a home without having to hire an architect or any engineer if you want to build it prescriptively. So I feel that 144 mile an hour is a fair number to talk to a homeowner who's wanting to build his own home. He can get there with the product. He or she can get there with the product they could purchase. To get to 175 mile an hour, as that red line depicts, and we've chosen 168 if we were to go to this 700 year occurrence, those are just gale force winds. And it would be very hard to build a wooden structure to withstand that kind of occurrence on a, you know, on a minimum build basis. So that's why we've chosen 100 year map. That's all I have to say about that one. And I'm not sure where Boulder come up with this, where their wind speed or wind study they came from on this. But that's Boulder counties. We pulled ours from a national registry of wind studies.
All right, it's Miranda again. I'm going to zip us back to where we were.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dan and Emily.
Well, thank you, guys. If you have any questions, I think we'll do that at the end or please email us.
Yes, we will circle back up to questions. So thanks, Stan and Emily. As they mentioned, there's not a whole lot of changes in terms of the energy code from 2012 to 2018. However, we did identify that Boulder County has stricter energy conservation codes. So our Sustainability Advisory Board, specifically Garrett McDaniel, our sustainability coordinator, is working on completing that comparison between the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code and Boulder Counties. And they will be coming back to provide their recommendations regarding what parts of Boulder County we integrate into or we propose integrating into Netherlands. Also, as a part of our 2018 building code updates, we are looking to revitalize our construction and demolition program. And I'm going to turn it over to Chris Pelletier, give us a brief overview of what that program is about.
So we started this, I think, in 2017. And the mayor may remember this when we first proposed it. And it essentially charges a small fee based on square footage to incentivize builders to recycle. Because one of the common things you see at a construction site is a 30 year dumpster with scrap wood, cardboard and metal. And so that was the reason why we started this. It's not a lot of money. And what we have found over the years that builders pay into it, but it doesn't really incentivize them to do what we'd like them to do. And what we've noticed in other places like Boulder, they actually charge more money in hopes of incentivizing builders to participate in it. We're not proposing that here. We just want to improve it and hopefully advertise it better and try to get builders to participate in this program. That's what this is. Nothing's changed in the last four years.
So now Rick Hendrickson with the fire department is going to go over the fire code changes.
Good evening, everybody. Everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, fire code changes. We're going to cover a couple of different things. Excuse me, one is fire code changes, direct as it says. And we'll also talk a little bit about some changes to the residential code and building code to kind of meet the goals we're looking for. First thing specific to the fire code here, so you'll see there's some new information added to the 18 code that we really like, we think it's going to help. Chapter three, you can see they added something for food trucks. That's has not been in the code before. We're starting to get more and more food trucks up here. The town has asked us to inspect them, but we really didn't have a good guide or any enforcement with that. So now with this in the code, we'll have that. Chapter nine, they added water mist fire suppression systems. These are primarily for residential. They're relatively new in this country, but they've been used in Europe for quite a while. They're a fairly high tech system. They're in most cases a little more expensive than the traditional fire sprinkler system. But if you're doing a retrofit into an existing building, it probably would come out cheaper. Again, fairly new in our area, we've got one going in on a cabin. It's a good sized cabin up on Fourth of July Road. It's a company out of Fort Collins that's doing that. Chapter 11, new, they've added CO detection for daycares and schools. For existing buildings, existing daycares like we have in town, the plug-in CO detectors are fine. They don't need to put in a whole fire alarm system. Schools, it really doesn't apply to the school, the elementary and the middle. Well, the high school's not in town anyway, but the elementary school, because they are under a state standard, which is still the 2015 code. I'm not sure when they'll change. So there's a, be a small cost there for daycare operator to add a plug-in CO detector or two. Chapter 12, and this is kind of a big one for us, is previous editions of the code, things related to full tank systems and other battery systems were kind of scattered around. Well, they moved them all into one, one chapter. And that's really going to make it a lot easier for us to go through that and review those. Should be easier on the builders as well to look for that information. The other thing that was added in the 18 code, it was a new chapter 39, which is processing and extraction facilities. This is primarily marijuana related, but that's got its whole own chapter now. Again, it was bits and pieces scattered around the code. They brought it all into one place. Currently, we only have one extraction business in town that I'm aware of anyway. And they're not using a fumble liquid to do it. So it doesn't even, doesn't even apply to them in this case. So these are the changes that I'm aware of that are going to make, you know, could be a, the only cost one is the CO detection. The rest of the changes in the 18 fire code really have to do with much larger buildings than we're going to be building in this town in any foreseeable future that I can imagine. And the rest of the fire code again, primarily applies to commercial buildings. That's all for that. We can move on to the next one. The other recommendations that we, the recommend, we want to look at, we're going to go into more detail with this. With the first one is when we adopted the 2012 code back in 15, they amended out residential sprinkler systems. We'd like to not amend them out in the 18 code. These are a life safety system. I'll get into more details on that in a little bit. We want to add requirements for exterior fire resistance and required defensible space, basically pulling in what Boulder County has done to the residential code with their amendments there. And that way, we have the same requirements that the county does. So for builders, they're looking at the same thing. We clearly know from the last few years that having defensible space and having buildings with exterior fire resistance makes a huge difference in wildland fires. Next thing, we want to add a new chapter 40, which is storage of distilled spirits and wines. And this is kind of, this is a new thing. It's actually in the 21 code, and that's where we want to pull it from. And what this does is if somebody wants to build a micro distillery, like there's two of them in Gilpin County now, this gives them some options on storage that they don't currently have in the existing code because it kind of creates a middle ground. So they don't have to meet all of the fire suppression requirements that a full, a large distillery or someplace storing a lot of spirits or wines would have to meet. It's relatively short chapter, but I think it's a good thing to do. So if want to move on to the next, talk a little bit more about sprinkler systems. You can see some statistics there. The big thing that's important to us is that resident firefighter death rates, 80% lower in homes with fire sprinklers. That's just huge for us. I mean, we've had people in and around town die in fires. We've had pets die in fires. We don't want to see that happen. This really helps this out. Most of the time, one sprinkler activates, it keeps the fire to the room of origin, keeps it small, keeps the building from being structurally damaged and allows us to get in safely and deal with fire. I cleared the link, I think you had this at a time. You can take a look at that link at another time. It's a fairly long document. Move on to the next slide, please. And here's a quick video, I just want to, it's less than a minute and a half. You can show that, Miranda.
Sorry, bear with me, it gets a little, it's got a little hiccup. Bear with me, sorry.
If you are building a new home, have you ever stopped to think about how safe it would be in the event of a fire? If your home doesn't include fire sprinklers, the answer is simple. It's not safe enough. Due to the construction and open designs of today's new homes, along with their synthetic furnishings and contents, home fires are burning hotter and faster than ever before.
I think we've got a delay. Hold on one second. I want to make sure you're actually being able to watch this. Okay. Not sure what screen you're looking at. That's my problem.
That is the screen with the video, the YouTube screen.
Okay, it's like stuck on my screen on the PowerPoint. I need to end that slideshow. Okay, take four.
Have you ever stopped to think about how safe it would be in the event of a fire? If your home doesn't include fire sprinklers, the answer is simple. It's not safe enough. Due to the construction and open designs of today's new homes, along with their synthetic furnishings and contents, home fires are burning hotter and faster than ever before. You may have less than three minutes to get your family out of the home. Fire Protection Association admitted in 2014, fire departments responded to over 367,000 home fires. These fires caused more than 2,700 deaths, 12,000 injuries and 37,000 total damage. We even risk the potential of such loss if fire sprinklers are available. Fire sprinklers are individually activated by heat, so they will not be activated once. A sprinkler closest to the fire will activate and smoke from toast cannot activate them. Sprinklers limit damage to a single area, limiting the use of deadly smoke and toxin and allow residents to safely escape. Also, homes can receive discounts on their fire insurance if they protect their homes with fire sprinklers.
Okay. So we can move on to the next slide there. So I think you have that link available. You can probably hear it a little better if you look at it on your own computer. But one of the key things there is, one of the myths is that, you know, one sprinkler head goes off, they all go off. And that's just not true at all. It's just the ones that get enough heat because the fires nearby is all that goes off. So anyway, that's something that's pretty important to us. Next thing here is increasing resistance to, for homes in wildland fires. This was the number one recommendation from the CPo grant that we had over the last year. The Community Preparedness Assistance for Wildfire. Their number one assistance or their number one recommendation was that we update our codes to get more resistant homes, more resistant properties. And that's what we're trying to do here. Here's just some of the things that we want to see happen. Most of this is already in our existing code, but it's a stepped thing. If you're within five feet of a property line, you've got to meet the highest level of standards. If you've been five and 20, you've got a lesser standard. And beyond that 20 feet from a property line, it's down to no real restrictions on what you need to have for fire resistance or no requirements. That worked really well in the 1800s when those kind of step things were developed in the building codes for our large urban fires. As we've all seen, we've seen the news reports, we've had the fires nearby. It doesn't matter how far you are from a property line. If you get an ember shower and your home or your business is not designed with the right exterior materials, it can burn down. Yes, it can anyway, but this gives us a fighting chance on that. So we want to see this upgraded to those higher levels regardless of where you are in town. Again, bringing in the Boulder County amendments to the residential code for that consistency across the boundary. So everybody's got the same level of protection on anything new. And that's for both business and residential. Costs on this, if you can go to the next slide. This is a graphic put together by Headwaters Economics. It's a group out of Montana that reviews, you know, looks at a lot of costs with wildfire. I think the total numbers are probably not valid around here, but it gives you some idea of comparison with construction costs on a nationwide basis. You'll see the, you know, increase in cost for a roof, which we all require a Class A roof. Increased cost on decks, yes, we understand that it's going to cost more to do a fire resistant deck. But decks are a huge cause of houses burning down because the decks catch fire easily. They're well ventilated, there's lots of air movement, and there's typically spots for embers to pile up. Where you save cost is on your exterior walls and your siding. And this is comparing to like a nice wood siding versus like a concrete fiber board like Hardy actually tends to come in a little bit cheaper. Again, this is just for ballpark numbers for you. And if you go on to the next slide. I asked a bunch of builders in town to, you know, we kind of worked through this, trying to come up with some different prices on things just for some comparison. On the siding, you know, On the siding, you know, basic wood, nice wood siding. About four bucks a square foot, the cheaper like press poured kind of stuff that kind of looks like hardy board, but it's not is cheaper. Hardies around the same, maybe a little more expensive. Stucco, little more, stone quite a bit. Decks, a lot of variability in decks. Really depends on how tall they are, what kind of engineering has to go into them, how big the beams need to be on prices. So there's a, that was kind of hard to nail down. It got a lot of discrepancy in talking to different builders. Also, I think depends on how good their decking crew was and how quick they worked. But you can see a basic wood like we allow right now. It's on the low end. If you want to go to, if you got the money and you want a nice super ignition resistant wood deck, you're going to pay a premium for that. And then the kind of the trex or the other composite ones, they do meet the standards. Yep, they'll, they'll burn if you put enough heat on them. But they, they do meet the standards for fire resistance. Fire sprinklers, what we're seeing in most of ours here is what's called the NFPA thirteen D systems. The price range there is the low end. They can get quite a bit higher. Most of the places where I see higher are in these houses with big vaulted ceilings and high walls where they're having to, you know, higher lifts to get in there to get up into the ceiling space to put in the sprinkler systems. Also because of our climate, most of the systems up here have to be antifreeze system. Which does add to the price there. Oh, let's see. Think that kind of covers the basics there. I think that's my last one, isn't it Miranda? Yep.
Miranda is having a difficult time right now, some technical issues. So I'm just going to introduce Cynthia, who will talk about housing affordability, affordability goals.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
It is, it is a bit choppy here. It's the Netflix hour, so I suspect that our beleaguered bandwidth is having a hard time, but as about housing affordability and you should see that in your packets over different affordable housing goals. So there's been a lot of discussion about affordable housing in the last six years and that and there certainly is a continued need for affordable housing. All costs have increased up here in the mountains and especially given economic impacts of COVID on many in the workforce. So the goals that were shown on this list, they represent the planning commission's work goals that were identified in the beginning of twenty sixteen. And they were derived from one of the board goals to work on housing and specifically affordable housing in the community at that time. The planning commission has had new members and the board has had new members. So this was a good opportunity to highlight the work that the planning commission has accomplished and then any areas that have not been achieved. And you know, that's an opportunity for the board to check in and see if they still desire any of those goals to be met or any tweaking on ordinances that have been passed. And fortunately, I've worked for the town during airtime. So I've seen these discussions be initiated and take shape over the years. For those that resulted in ordinances. So it's been a good, long discussion. And as that document highlights, we started talking about this December third, twenty fifteen, there was a public forum on affordable housing to discuss the definition of affordable housing, consideration and barriers as well as goals. It wasn't highly attended. It was at the theater, but it was a good opportunity to get a lot of feedback, which we did get a lot of notes and that helped shape things. The January twenty-seven, twenty sixteen meeting, the planning commission had work planned goals that were identified. Giving that to the comprehensive plan and other goals down. It was discussed at the commission meeting. And it included the areas and opportunities below. There is one missing. So there is an eighth one in here that I missed. That was an overlay district. I forgot about that. But we can kind of go over these pretty quickly here. So the first was an administrative review and these are not in chronological order because some of these discussions took place over many years. And there were many discussions on these topics. I note the time that it was introduced and then sort of what it resulted in and didn't list all of the discussions. Or that would have been several pages probably, but the first I note is the administrative review of under four units provided the zoning requirements are met. Was previously, if you wanted to have a duplex up to a fourplex, you would be going to the planning commission for a special review use and having that reviewed. It was discussed that that could be inhibitive for folks. And if they had all of the zoning requirements, so if they had the minimum lot area per dwelling unit, for example, if you are in the mountain residential zone, say up in Big Springs and you have an acre lot and people were able to have an acre home and they were able to meet setbacks and other zoning requirements and of course driveway grade that they would be able to go through an administrative process and go to building rather than go through special review. That was introduced December fourteenth, twenty sixteen at the commission meeting and public hearing. And it resulted in an ordinance pretty quickly there in twenty seventeen in February. You can see the second one was affordable housing project for County Housing Authority. They started talking to me in the end of twenty sixteen and came forward for a preliminary planned unit development in January twenty seventeen. They extended that to keep working on it and then came in with the NLPUD and also the right of way vacation requests that flank both sides of that building. And that was all approved there at the March twentieth, twenty eighteen BOT meeting. That's a twenty-six unit building, as you can see, as come into town. And they do own other units through town. I would estimate they have about fifty units throughout the town based on the six houses at Rodeo Drive, the six units that are in Prime Haven, the twelve units that consist of the three buildings of Beaver Peak Apartments, plus the twenty-six units. So that's about fifty units of affordable housing in town that's owned by Boulder County Housing Authority. The third one, accessory dwelling units, that was an ongoing discussion for quite some time. Introduced originally in twenty seventeen, an ongoing discussion and resulted in ordinances there in twenty eighteen. Short, very long discussion. That was introduced in twenty sixteen and a lot of ongoing discussion and a subcommittee and a lot of public weigh in on that. And there were ordinances that resulted from that. As you can see, starting in twenty nineteen and, and following on. Number five, the eliminating barriers to mixed use developments. That was a board goal that came out of a discussion at the Board of Trustees and the Planning Commission Joint Work Session there in seventeen in October. And that's in the comprehensive plan of looking at how to eliminate barriers to mixed use developments so that a board suggestion and a goal they desired to see. And the planning commission discussed it. There were some caveats on that mixed use. For example, there's a to building size or the number of units that it may be a special review use. But otherwise, there's more promotion of mixed use in the certain districts that they wanted to see that promoted in. And so that resulted in an ordinance in twenty eighteen. Long-term rental was a discussion that was brought forward in twenty sixteen. There was discussion at the commission meeting. And the planning commission had considered that over those months and came forward, made recommendations on approval. That met with a lot of opposition in the town from property owners who came to that meeting and spoke out. They were not in support of having long-term rental regulations. They felt that was very inhibitive of them and, and they didn't move to the mountains for that sort of thing. There were a lot more long-term renters at that point. The planning commission pivoted then to try to tackle the short-term rental. And then that was a fairly productive discussion. But again, that resulted in some, some ordinances there. So the town has not adopted long-term rental regulations. I know there's been recent discussion about revisiting that topic. And number seven, the financial incentives for affordable housing. That was another goal that, that the planning commission had discussed briefly. That was introduced at the twenty sixteen meeting, considering different financial incentives. And they did not go very long down that road as they were working on other goals. And then we had some staff turnover, including town administrator and a lot of persons. So that one has also the town has not adopted incentives. And then I mentioned there was an eighth one and that was actually an overlay. It was something that former town administrator Alicia Reese had presented at the time back in twenty sixteen and talked about creation of overlay districts. Those overlay districts, for example, if you had a historic district and then you'd have associated zoning that would be attributed to that, that may be different than the zoning around it, but it would create this sort of overlay district and you'd see it on a zoning map. And I would say that is also a goal that was not met. And that really, you know, didn't, didn't have a lot of long discussion on it. So those latter three goals, you know, as for whether or not the board wants to consider those or tackle those or wants the planning commission to tackle it, I guess. A consideration for this board and at your retreat, however that would be done or however your board goals would come up. But I would say those, those three elements, long-term rental, financial incentives for affordable housing in the overlay district, they have not really flown anywhere. But other goals have been passed. So there has been positive movement forward on the creation of achieving some of these goals. And I think that's great for the board to understand and also for the planning commission to understand. So I wanted to put together that document. And if anyone has any questions, I would hope to answer that.
Okay, thank you Cynthia. So the other thing that the, the other thing the staff wanted to do was just give the board some of the resources that are available for housing assistance. This was a question that was brought up when we first brought the idea to you that the building codes needed to be updated. So I wanted to point out two state entities that do provide funding. And the first is a Division of Housing and that's actually Department of Local Affairs. And they provide down payment assistance and other funding opportunities for first time home buyers. They also provide low interest revolving loan funds for homeowners and that's for repairs, modifications and new construction. And then there's the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority, CHFA. They are actually a financial institution and they support first time home buyers and multifamily projects with low interest loans. They also have a grant program for distance. So I just wanted the board to be aware of that. There is funding mechanisms out there that can support first time home buyers, also people who own homes and need to do some modifications and also family developments. Thank you.
Thanks Karen. So following tonight's Board of Trustees meeting, we're putting a focus on public vetting and doing that in a series of different formats. First, we plan to bring this before the Envision twenty thirty Advisory Committee and discussing with them which subcommittee they feel like they'd like this presentation to be reviewed with. So we'll start there next week. Then we'll be presenting at all the boards and commission meetings in March. So the DDA, ProSAB, Planning Commission and SAB. And then we also have scheduled three public charrettes bearing times on Monday, the fifteenth and Tuesday, the sixteenth, and all of that is here for you. Obviously, our biggest focus is on making sure that we get public feedback. And so the plan is to do this presentation and do an overview of the changes between two thousand twelve and two thousand eighteen code. From there, we then are going to move into the kind of the public hearing pieces where we first introduce to the Board of Trustees the actual ordinance and the changes that are being made. Then we'll look at doing the official public hearing on May fourth. And if the Board of Trustees feels that they'd like to adopt the ordinance that day, that could occur or that maybe is postponed to a later meeting. The thought is that this ordinance would go into effect in June twenty twenty-one, obviously depending on when the Board of Trustees adopt it. So now we'd like to move to questions. You have still Dan and Emily from Safe Built as well as our whole two thousand eighteen Building Administrative Committee to answer the questions.
Lots of information there. That was, thank you for the presentation, Dan and Emily, Rick, Miranda, Cynthia, thank you for all the presentation and Karen for all the presentations and pieces of that. I'm just gonna, I'll start by opening this up to the board. Yeah, there's, there's a lot I need to chew on here and I'm not sure I have questions quite yet just because of the amount of information. I really look forward to seeing this go to our town boards to particularly when it comes to the page, I think it was Emily brought up, the IRC appendices, which listed the variety of appendices that we can choose to adopt or not. Everything from, you know, straw bale houses to single family solar, it looked like, and patio coverings, the variety of those. So I'm very looking forward to seeing what the planning commission, SAB in particular, say about those and to help us direct, direct this board into which ones of these we should be adopting as appendices. I'm just going to work my way down here and begin with Eric. Do you have any questions for any of the presenters?
I guess my only question is whether or not there are codes available or out there that that focus more on sustainability of materials, of building materials. I know that we talked about sort of energy efficiency was part of, part of the twenty eighteen update and changing some of those numbers, but I wonder if there are sustainable materials options that we can look at. And I don't know if you can ask. Sorry.
Eric, this is Dan with Safe Built. I can certainly look into that. I do believe there's some material out there. I'll go ahead and make a note here and make sure I get that stuff rounded up and headed your way.
That'd be great. Thank you.
You bet.
Trustee at?
Yeah, I think the presentation was very thorough and very informative and answered most of my questions. One issue that I brought up previously, not in this context, but in the context of a project we were considering, was the notion of passive solar design and orientation of the house so that it's facing south or as much south as possible to have solar gain in the winter and therefore save on heating and be a more comfortable dwelling. I don't know, building codes is, is the right form. I suspect it might be. And maybe it's something rather than a requirement. Maybe it's a requirement that the developer consider it and present it to the homeowner, but it'd be an option that they consider once they consider the location of the house, the size of the lot and whether or not solar orientation and design could be incorporated without major increases in cost.
Yes, Alan, the energy code does have a a portion in it that has the orientation of the way the house faces. And we have a program. It's called Res Check. And they have a comp check too for commercial buildings, but the res check. We can ask if you would like, we can put that in part of our review and our design standards. So when new homes are being built, that they provide a res check and which way the home faces. And it can have energy trade-offs that if you face it, like you said, south with a lot of your glazing facing that way to warm the home up, you can, you know, just depending on which way it faces and how the energy is absorbed. And how that works out for an energy compliant home. The res check is a pretty intensive program that they can provide us. Generally, we take it and we review it for, to make sure it meets energy code, but we can ask that they provide the way the house is orientated in this res check. And I can give you some examples of those too.
That sounds good.
How a house facing, say, north instead of south and how it affects the energy code and how it, the compliance comes into factor.
Yeah, I lived in a north facing house in Rollinsville in the nineteen seventies. Yeah, I lived in a north-facing house in Rollinsville in the 1970s and it was miserable in the winter. And now I have a house that's facing southeast and, you know, and a really cold morning could be zero. And once that sun comes up, we can gain 20 degrees.
Yep.
Just with passive solar.
Yeah.
It makes a huge difference. Now, the only downside is, uh, if you don't have a roof or something that shades those windows in the summer, then you have heat gain in the summer that you don't want. But with a little bit of a overhang, you know, the sun is much higher in the summer. It's really easy to blank, to block that sun in the summer and let it in in the winter when it's much lower.
Yeah. Well, we can certainly just put it in our, um, uh, some middle details that they need to use the Res Check program. It's, it's a free program out there downloadable, um, that we require, uh, a Res Check and make sure you put your house, your orientation of where it's facing and show us your trade-offs of the energy efficiencies. Okay?
That sounds great. Thanks very much.
And Alan, this is Cynthia. Uh, I had made an applicant guide on the website about passive solar, uh, some years back. It's on the building pages. A lot of information on the building page and I want to overhaul that, but I can send that around to the board to, it's exactly what you're talking about. And I do talk to builders and if, if I could stop people from putting garages on the south-facing side, moved out of an east-facing house into a south-facing house and holy moly, what insulation and south-facing orientation will do to warm a place up with passive solar. It's major. And what Alan was talking, lower roof so that you get that low winter sun in, but you're not getting baked out by that hot summer sun. I mean, it's a 15-degree difference between the lower level of my house and the, and the middle level. My house in the summertime, it's just so hot. And so, um, I can totally understand that. I can send around that applicant guide so the board can see that. I don't get to tell people what their design should be. I certainly encourage them, uh, when, you know, when I'm talking to people initially about that and, and, and let them know, like, why not save 70 to 80% on your heating and cooling bills? You know, we're, we're, we're mostly in cities. So, you know, if you're, if you're not on solar, then why not give Excel less money? No offense, Excel, but, uh, you know, I, I, I think that's just a, a wonderful thing in design. And, uh, I try to promote it however, but obviously we have some interesting lots in town and in some cases people are going for a view. Uh, but if you've ever lived and had solar gain, you understand, uh, certainly the benefits of it. It's a, it's a really big deal. So thanks for mentioning that.
Thank you Cynthia. That sounds great. But I look forward to seeing it.
Trustee Taylor?
Yeah, I was wondering about the wind maps and if there's anything in the studies that indicate any trends in increasing wind speeds based upon, uh, global climate change.
Not that we could see in that, um, the A S C E, um, dash 10. I can certainly provide that whole wind study, um, to you if you would like to take a look at it and, uh, but not that I could see in any of it. And I've been watching it. They had, they came out in five, in, in 2005, seven, 10. And they've really not had.
And it's stayed fairly stable.
About that.
Okay. Very fine. Thank you.
Trustee Danforth?
Yeah, I think, um, the presentation was wonderful. There's just a lot of information to discuss. You know, things to adopt, things not to adopt, things that we removed before and that we should maybe put back in. And with all of this that we have to go through in the upcoming meetings, I, I think my question is, what is our access to representatives from Safe Built to ask questions as they may come up in the review process over the next few months? Will we just be emailing anybody or collect them all, collect a bunch of questions and submit them all at once?
So trustee Danforth. Yeah, I would make sense to send the questions to our administrative team, which again is myself, uh, Karen, Cynthia, Kristen, Rick. And then, um, we can, because I know Safe Built's, you know, obviously incredibly busy. We can triage and, and send things to them that we can't address ourselves. Like some things, fire code, obviously Rick is going to be our subject matter expert. So that's my recommendation is to send it to the admin committee first.
Great.
Lindsey, uh, trustee Corvallin?
Um, I was wondering where we can find more detailed information about those appendixes, like the ones about patio covers or hot tubs or straw bale or, I, I didn't, is there anywhere that actually has it spelled out the changes?
Sure, I can, uh, I can bundle those up and send them off to Miranda.
Yeah, it's gonna be hard to make a decision if, if, you know, without being able to.
You bet.
Assess what the changes are. And I, I do want to say that I, I like what Alan was talking about regarding solar. Passive, I guess we can't put it in a code, I guess, because it's a little bit of an overreach, I suppose. But it does make a big difference and also the vice versa when things get too hot. I, I could see sometimes this summer, the need for air conditioning for people. So I just, is there any way to make smart construction in a code? You know, with not too hot, not too cold, it can be done. It's not hard. But we can't put it, we can't make them do it. We can't put it in a code for future developments.
Well, you can amend your code, anything that, that you guys want to do. We just need to know, um, what you want to put in there. And where we're going to gather this information in, you know?
Well, it's just so, if we really do care about sustainability, that is like the number one. Over, I guess that's something that we need to discuss amongst ourselves then.
Okay. And then, um, I gotta get some sustainability materials to Eric. Um, I'll get them to Miranda and she can disperse it and, uh, we'll see what we can find on that. But as far as what you want to put in and how you, what you want to amend your code, we need to make sure that we have some material or some documentation to, when we do ask this or we do amend our codes, our building codes to reflect that. We need to make sure we, uh, have some foundation.
Yeah, but could, could we say things like every attempt was made to create, you know, a, a passive solar home or, and also with considering the summer sun too. So I don't know, passive cooling as well. I mean, that's something that could be done.
I'll see what I can find on it. You bet.
Okay. And you'll give us the appendix information?
Yeah, I've got a note in here to make sure I get the appendix to Miranda.
I know, like my friend wanted to put a hot tub in Boulder County and she had to offset the electric costs with solar or some off, or some non-grid sort of source. And so I, I don't, I'm just curious if that's what the hot tub is or, or what. Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, just, uh, some information to tell you, in Fort Collins, we had an ordinance passed that said in a multifamily development, half of the units had to be solar oriented.
Yeah, okay.
They could require, they could apply for a waiver, you know, for, if there were some extraordinary circumstances where they couldn't achieve at least 50% of the units.
Why, why wasn't that just also for a single-family home?
It could. I mean, we could say.
Oh, you could. Okay.
Must, you must.
If you get with a multi-building, we got lots of units, you can't all face the same way, but yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I guess that's something we should talk about later.
Yeah. Thank you.
That's why we're having these conversations. I'm glad this is coming up.
Mayor Protemp Baumover?
Uh, I guess I got a few questions. Um, nothing really regarding the wind load that seems reasonable. I'm glad you guys went with the lower there, though I guess there are times in certain areas that definitely does blow up to 165. Uh, but like you said, those are gale-force winds, so fix the damage. Um, I guess most of my questions right off the bat are probably going to be for Rick Henderson regarding the, the fire, um, updates in the fire code. Partial questions would be for Rick. First would be for Miranda. Is it possible that the Board of Trustees could get transcripts from the 2012 discussions when we updated the code? Um, particularly why we left the, uh, sprinkler systems out of the picture at that time? Uh, it would be helpful, I think, moving forward with these discussions just to have that historical background and all of that discussion kind of floating around in our minds as we look at it now that it's 2020. We've been through some wildfires and we've had a few incidences in town. Regarding the other updates to the fire code, Rick, basically what I'm hearing from this is do away with all wood siding. We're going to hardy if we update to 2018. Is that correct? Minus the really expensive fire treatment of wood siding?
Uh, you can still do log homes because they're a large enough, um, block of wood that it's, is fire resistant. Um, I think, yeah, sort of going to something pretty expensive other than log. You're looking at, uh, it doesn't have to be hardy. You could do stucco, you can do metal, you can do other options, but, um.
Wood siding down the picture, so.
Pretty much, yeah.
Um, beyond that then, when it comes to decking, when we're not only talking about the decking material, we'd be looking at the framing material for decks as well. That, that would then require the framing to be fire-treated as well as ground contact. Is that true?
Yeah, fire-treated or a large enough material that again, it's got a fire resistance.
And then that's what, six by eight, I think, in the code or five?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure the exact dimension that's required, but.
Quite a lot. So basically we're upgrading the decking that if you're going to build a deck, you now have to build it with fire-treated material or timbers. So I guess I just have concerns here regarding, I guess, well, one, availability of material, two, increase in costs and what's the, the real great benefit here? Is there any, I guess, appetite on the fire district side of looking at this? Um, well, I guess you can't really identify anywhere in town minus second street, first street and maybe third street that isn't fire-prone. But I, I'm curious on the fire district side. How strong are you guys really pushing the fire suppression systems and the doing away with all wood siding and requiring all fire combustin- combustible resistant material?
Um, very strongly. That's why we're here. Honestly, that, the, these are things that we think are really important. You know, the deck issue, I was just listening to a, uh, webinar earlier today on the troublesome fire and they talked about, firefighters were talking about cutting decks off houses because the decks were already on fire and that's how they were saving the house. Uh, I've never done that on a fire myself, but I've certainly heard plenty of times that the, you know, the deck's on fire, the house was, you know, well-maintained and was dish-resistant, but the deck's burning. So we know that's an issue, uh, and we want to get that tightened up if we can. Um, I mean, ultimately this is up to the trustees. But both of these things are really important to us. That's why we started this whole process and we're pushing ahead with these changes.
So, thank you. And I guess I don't want to take up too much time on this particular topic, but I guess when I look at this, I struggle with a balance between really minimum building requirements versus, um, the ultimate goal that we're having, especially as we're getting into these discussions of southern-facing, uh, building requirements and requiring certain things in code. When we're looking to update code largely in this update, I think this is a very positive step for the town to take. I don't really have many problems with it. I don't necessarily disagree in any way, shape or form with the updates to the fire codes. I guess where I see a problem with it is where it interacts with Town and Netherlands' other stated goals, such as affordable housing. And also when we're, when we just look at the influx that we're having currently in our housing market. So I'm interested to really see where these, um, talks go, these stakeholder talks that are supposed to take place. And I guess beyond, um, talking about really the price impact and the increased of costs, I would have a question for Cynthia with our codes of at what point in a remodel would it, would, does current town code require folks update to meet these 2018 codes? Is it 30% of the overall structure? That's, that's somewhere in my brain, it's there, or are we more like at 50, 60% where all of a sudden it would kick in that if you started, let's say, updating, uh, house built in 1950, all of a sudden you would have to update to these 2018 codes, install sprinkler systems. And really all you're trying to do is put on a bathroom and a master bed.
Yeah, John, that's a really great question. And I think that, you know, it, it, it does, I mean, bring in Dan Wester and also, uh, Rick Henrickson on this, but I say, I'm not sure it's down to a percentage. I think it depends what the project is. And, and I know that's not as specific as you're looking for, um, and seem vague. Because in, in general with the building code, if you're changing something, you're bringing it to current code. And if you're not touching it, then you're, you're not bringing that up to current code. But obviously there's some interplay if you're having a remodel. Um, and, you know, so, so I'm not sure about that 30% person. And, and I asked Dan Wester what he thinks, um, in terms of, of what would trigger that, because I think it's going to be really specific in terms of what you're proposing. You know, they're not going to ask you to update the whole home if you're just adding on a bathroom. But obviously you'd have to have that bathroom done to the current, you know, whatever current code level it would be. So I'll, uh, I'll let Dan, Dan step in on that question and see if he can add to that.
That was very well put Cynthia. Um, and to your point, if you don't touch it, um, that code's not going to apply. Um, if you were to gut something down to the studs, um, then your energy, I mean, if you took your, all your insulation out of the walls and everything else, um, a lot of homes that are built with two by four, um, and you're not going to get that R21 in that two by four wall. Yeah. It, it's hard to ask somebody to try to reach out, get a, uh, a spray foam insulation in there because that's just astronomical in cost. So they do sell an R15 bat over the counter at your home supply stores and we would accept that. It's a two by four wall where deferred out to two by six to get your R21 and all that energy code in there. Uh, we're not going to go down that road. Um, if you take the plumbing out, the plumbing are going to be up, you know, be brought up to code. Electrical code the same. But if you've not touched any of that, um, if you're extending it, the extended part's going to have to be brought up to code. The stuff that's feeding it will not, um, you know, depending on how rough the shape is, but, um, there is, there are some worksheets that you can do on an existing building code. Um, when certain things have to, to be brought up to, I think you're talking about commercial, when it comes to accessibility, some of those percentages and dollar amounts kick in for accessibility for commercial. But it's really not that way in residential.
So that's mostly good. I guess I was looking at with the potential of a sprinkler system. You know, if you're bumping out, let's say you add an on master bedroom, you're putting a master bath in there. Sprinkler system, we would then require both of those to have a sprinkler system. But what you're saying is the house that it is being built out of would not be required to have a sprinkler system. Yet you're installing the framework for the sprinkler system. So why not?
Rick answer that one, you know?
Yeah, there's still some room on that to discuss where that kicks in. Um, some of the sample code amendments that are out there talk about, you know, you add more than, you know, and there is a percentage to the house or square footage, then you do need to retrofit a sprinkler system and it would most likely be for the entire house. to retrofit a sprinkler system, and it would most likely be for the entire house, because partial systems don't get you to the goal you want to have. And I'm certainly open to looking at where we draw that line, rather than throwing anything out right now, I think we can discuss where some of those options could be.
Sweet, well, I guess that's, that's most of my questions, the last thing I, I kind of am curious about, not really part of the updating building code, but maybe if we could just get from the building department, Cynthia, maybe just a number count of on potential AUD applicant, yeah, AUD applications, if we've had any since we've passed that, and just an update on, on the STR, I know we've had the pandemics, but we list those as two of our affordable housing goals, and I think it's still, they were goals and they were long discussions, and we have past ordinances, but I think it's still far too early to actually say that they have achieved the, the goal that they were kind of set out for, so it'd be nice to get an update on that. And I guess last of all with the, just the building code update, I think it's really important that we balance kind of as the Board of Trustees, the need to update these building codes, I think this is an awesome presentation, and I think overall this is a good idea, but we also have a lot of other stated needs as a town, I think there was very clear reasons in 2012 why we chose to amend some things. I think the appendixes, as folks have pointed out, are going to be very worthwhile discussions, and it might be worthwhile for this board to think about a work session to discuss this update in further detail. That way we have more time to really, as a board, figure out what are we trying to do, what are our different ideas out here, we can further discuss ideas of southern facing and codes, give Dan some time to kind of formulate some ideas, but I have no problem with updating to the 2018 code, I just think as a board, our job is to take the expertise and the information provided by Rick and everyone, and balance that with the comprehensive plan, the master plan, and our other goals as a board, such as affordable housing and maintaining the character of Ned. I will point out that when the recent PUD for Little Bear came about, and they were like, hey, we're going to do hardy siding, because it's awesome, it's fire resistant, it's cost effective, everyone went ew, because of the architecture, and we had a discussion of could we require them to have good architecture? So personally, I think hardy is a cool material, it sucks to work with, but it has benefits, but we also have to balance all of these things with previous discussions on the board, and, you know, the fact that we have crusher fine sidewalks specifically to avoid concrete based material products, and these things are built into Envision 2020 and our other sustainability goal. So at some point, we got to stop being Ned and going 20,000 directions, and really have a concrete plan here. So that's my rant, thanks.
Hey, Jonathan, this is Cynthia, I just wanted to say that, I, I mean, I wouldn't say that having these ordinances have, has achieved the goals of, of affordable housing, I would say the goal were put before the planning commission, which was catalyzed by one of the board goals, which was work on housing and affordable housing. So as that came to the planning commission, they were broken down into goals, and what was, a lot of what was set before them, they did work on, have discussions, and achieved some ordinances from that. As to whether or not that achieves affordable housing in the town is not for me to say. So I, so I, I, I just want to be clear with respect to that, if there was any confusion, that I'm not saying, oh, look, we've achieved affordable housing in Ned, because I'm also the person who has to take everyone's money for their building permit, so I see these increasing costs, and I'm the person that they're complaining to about the, the increasing costs, so I definitely understand that feeling from the residents and of their concerns about increasing costs of these things. But I just wanted to clarify that, that it wasn't, you know, these goals have made more affordable housing, these were the goals that were put before them, and so they, they have achieved some of them, as to whether brought more affordable housing is up to the board to discuss and, and residents with, with weigh in on the public.
Thank you for pointing that out, I actually, yeah, I appreciate you pointing that out, the only reason I was kind of pointing it out was to bring up, it seems to be a topic here, so if we really want to look at that, maybe not only look at what our goals were, what we did about it, let's start to look at what has the effect been? So I appreciate it, and I didn't in any way mean to say that that's what you were implying, so thanks, Cynthia.
Oh, absolutely, I mean, I understand these are, you know, the costs are a big concern, and that affordable housing has been a big topic, so as costs increase, it's, it's hard to, to try to balance that need for affordable housing in the town and the increasing costs of living in, in, in Netherlands and in the mountains, so I just wanted to clarify that piece, but yeah, certainly there's a lot more goals to, to work and, and for board to consider how well everything is working.
All right, I believe that was all the trustees, I think I, if I, if I skipped anyone, I'm sorry, speak up, but I believe that's everyone. Randy, you had a slide, the next step slide. Dates of, there we go, okay, so we're looking at going, starting to go to the public chariots and, and the various committees, wow, starting right up next week. My question for you, Miranda, is, you know, kind of, we've seen, there's a lot of questions, a lot of thoughts going through the trustees and everyone's minds, how best to get that? Is should we be sending you our comments, and you'll, I mean, you actually mentioned serving as triage before questions to SafeBuild, but do you want to be collecting all of that information in the interim?
Yes, so if the Board of Trustees walks away from this meeting and you have more thoughts and things, or even throughout the month that you want to add, please send them to me, and we'll be sure that we address them when we bring this back to the board in April.
Okay, well, and I think that was my next comment is, presented what Jonathan was saying, I think perhaps what we should target in early April, or after we've gotten input from all of our advisory boards, that work session, which is a chance for us to really sit down, see what the advisory boards came up with, see what our views are on the various appendices, and potentially some of these other additions we want to add, you know, south facing, that kind of thing. Before we actually bring it to a public hearing, let's have a, schedule a work session in early April to really bite into this and start chewing on the details of it as a board.
Okay.
Any, any other thoughts or comments on this from trustees?
Um, I, I did, I just wanted to comment.
Yeah.
Well, Jonathan, it was a lot to think about, and I appreciate all that, and I just, when he was talking about the cost for the fire measures, I just feel like we need to people to understand that it's a privilege to live up here in nature, and that maybe not everybody can come in here and drop in a modular home and say they're done, that it's like pretty much the least we could do are the things being asked, and I find it interesting that many people are really gung ho to clear cut the forest around them because they're so afraid of fires, but they're not willing to spend the extra $20,000, $30,000 in their home construction to create a home that could actually stop the spread of fire and protect their fire department who is coming in to save their home. And I, I think it's like a, kind of cliche to say, but a paradigm shift in how we think about how we want people to welcome people into our town, that they, they need to think about it more as an honor and a privilege that we live in the forest, and this is the least they can do to protect the forest and their neighbors, especially lately with all the different fire risks that are surrounding us between explosions and the droughts and the high winds, and et cetera, et cetera. So I just, that's just my comment, and, and, and that's, I know we've, we're going to talk about this some more, so we'll have that opportunity.
Thanks, Tanya.
And I just have one further comment, and that is with respect to sole orientation, the goal is to save the homeowner money on utilities and have a more comfortable house if the orientation can be accomplished without a major increase in price.
Yeah, go down. Anyone else? Emily, thank you for answering our questions, Rick as well, we're answering, I should say, the first round of questions, because I think you can tell you're going to get a lot more from us.
You bet, thank you.
You bet. No problem.
Thanks, have a good evening, guys. Uh, we are moving into our one action item for the night, which is a continuation or the next step in what we discussed at the previous meeting regarding opting out of marijuana hospitality establishments in Netherlands. Miranda, we want to introduce where we stand on this?
Yes, I wasn't necessarily going to recap everything, because we just talked about this, this is coming back before you as an action item, because as you recall, there was an error in the resolution number when we presented this last time, but really in essence, what we have before you is a resolution to opt out of marijuana hospitality establishments. The Marijuana Ordinance Review Committee had met and reviewed three options and determined that they felt that opting out was the most appropriate. In the packet, I have included two public comments received from Boulder County Public Health and Teens, Inc. that are in support of this resolution, and so the question before the board is, do you approve Resolution 2021 dash zero three, opting out of marijuana hospitality establishment?
All right, thank you, Miranda. Excuse me. Uh, before we get into any comments from the board, I know, I think we have a lot of people here who might want to be speaking on this one, so I want to get us to public comment quickly, so first, if any trustees have sort of procedural question, Miranda on this, do you have, speak up now, but, and then we'll go to public comment, and then bring it back to the board for personal comments, for trustee comments, so if anyone has questions, just sort of procedural structural questions, Miranda or, or the town attorney for that matter, before we go to public comment. All right, then we will open this up to the, the public, for anyone who would like to speak on this draft resolution or this proposed resolution. Raise your hands or speak up, get on video, may, and catch my attention. And as a reminder, for those of you who are colon users, because we have a number of those today, if you wanted to speak, you need to unmute yourself with star six. Screen, I'm seeing three hands up here, but I believe they are all from previous comments, so Ben Goldsmith, Kathleen Chipai, or Tanya, I think those are from previous hands up. All right, well, actually, I am not hearing or seeing anyone who wants to speak on this, so I'll bring it back to the board for comments.
Mayor, this is Stephen LaFavor.
Steve, yeah, welcome. Please, the floor is yours.
I'm on the phone, so I was figuring that out.
Yeah, I totally understand, please just identify yourself again, and you'll have three minutes.
All right, Stephen LaFavor, Executive Director of Teens, Inc., and speaking on behalf of Teens, Inc., you received a letter and just kind of reiterating that the Teens, Inc. Board of Directors made a motion to vote in favor of, or urge the board to vote in favor of opting out of the marijuana hospitality licensing, business licensing and mobile units, mainly just regarding the messaging that we're sending to young people, and kind of asking board members to really think about who, who we are as a town, or who we want to be as a town, where are our values as a town, and what's really important to us as a town, and just, you know, Teens, Inc., the schools, and the community and the parents are really putting a big effort towards making progress towards improving healthy activities and, and prevention focused efforts, and the Teens, Inc. Board fears that, you know, by moving forward, if the board chose to move forward with this effort, then of approving hospitality businesses and mobile units, that it would really undermine the work of a lot of the youth serving agencies in town, so thanks for your time and considering this effort and what Teens, Inc. is hoping that you all vote for today, thanks.
Thank you, Stephen. I believe, Kathleen Chipai, I see your hand flashing on and off.
She has sent another comment also by email, which I can read, since it sounds like maybe she can't get on, she said, I am against the resolution, this is an adult business, just like telling kids they cannot and should not drink until 21, it is the same here.
Thank you, Kathleen. Anyone else? Not, I'll bring it back to the board for any comments from trustees, beginning with trustee Corvallin.
Um, well, I was initially thinking it would be okay to have one in the Central Business District, but then the comment of last meeting regarding the naive user who isn't used to the effects after they've had a few beers, and stumbles in because it's a novelty, and then gets in their car, I don't know, that kind of hit me, and so that is probably the one thing that would cause me to vote no, or yes, or whatever it is to approve this, yes, I think it is. I don't know if this will make any difference with our youth, I mean, we already have four or five dispensaries, we've a huge culture of usage in this town, but I don't love the idea of people from wherever coming over here and getting in over their heads, so, because it, it would be more appealing to go into a cafe than to just go in the alley or whatever, so that's just my, my thoughts of it, so that's, that's it, thanks.
Thank you, Tanya. Trustee Taylor.
I, I agree, this is not a black and white issue, there's a lot of gray area here, which is why we provided as one of the exhibits the pros and cons, because there are pros and cons, and it's up to the members of the board to decide which, which side they think is most persuasive, and so I just invite the board to vote your conscience, thank you very much.
Thank you, Julian. Trustee Dan Forreth.
I have to agree with what Julian just said, that it's not, it's not so clear cut, it's just every shades of gray in here, and this is kind of a new thing, and, you know, we can opt out, and as far as I remember from our previous discussions, that if at a later date, we decide, yes, this is something we want, we could opt back in, isn't that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yep, so I, I'm definitely going to be voting on, on the side of being a little cautious with this, and not being an early adopter for the hospitality, just for safety concerns, not only for the users, our community, but also for the people working in those establishments and having to breathe in smoke, and, and being around those substances, so. Yeah, I, I think that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Lindsay. Mayor Protip Baumover.
I guess I just wanted to thank Julian for all the work he's put in on all of the marijuana related efforts, um, we'll be voting yes tonight, just as a result of kind of the vibe in the community largely between Teens, Inc., you know, our library, the communities that care, just in general as a small town, I believe we're not the largest town, we don't have the greatest municipal boundaries, and while there are some arguments against the passage of this tonight that I do find valid, I believe that as a new industry in marijuana and marijuana hospitality has a lot to figure out, it has a lot to figure out that has been mentioned in previous discussions, and I think this is. as a new industry in marijuana and marijuana hospitality has a lot to figure out. It has a lot to figure out that has been mentioned in previous discussions. And I think this is a great first step for the town of Netherlands. We don't really have a need in Ned for this. And, uh, if you're coming to visit Ned and get high on life, enjoy our, our community, our town, the trails, and then buy some weed here for ourselves to take it home. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Jonathan. Trustee Kumsesmail.
Yep, uh, I think this is a, a good resolution. I think that it's, we've discussed this already of how it is fundamentally different to the consumption of alcohol, uh, in even, you know, at a bar or something like that. That's not quite the same thing in that there's a lot to, to understand about it. There's a lot of, you know, ancillary health concerns that people might suffer from if we allow our restaurants to allow uh, smoking on in them. So I, I just think it's, we don't need it. Uh, most of the pros, uh, don't really speak to me and most of the cons do.
Your trustee app.
I concur with, uh, the comments of my fellow uh, board members. And the other thing that, uh, I think is a major issue that has not been addressed by the marijuana industry and has, uh, some attention in the local Daily Canyon newspaper is the strength of marijuana. You know, the, uh, back in the old days, the ancient days in the seventies, uh, marijuana was 5% THC. Now there is some marijuana available that's 90% THC. And, uh, I don't think we, I think it would be better to err on the side of caution and not have people potentially getting wasted in Netherlands and getting behind the wheel of a car uh, or not knowing what they're really getting into. And I do hope the end of treaty will, uh, or the state will do more to regulate the strength of these products as otherwise people are going to get in over their heads. So I think it's wise to, uh, go ahead and pass the ordinance. Okay.
Thank you, Alan. Uh, yeah, I mean, a lot of it's been said. I just want to, again, thank, uh, Julian and all the members of the Marijuana Task Force. I know as members of the, the local business community, Health and Human Services, a lot of people came together to work on that. And I want to thank you guys for the work, not only on this again, but also the previous work you were doing on marijuana ordinances. Uh, you guys are, you've done a great job on that. And, uh, I think this is a, a good ordinance. And, uh, I think it was like Lindsay said, you know, err on the side of caution. There's a lot of unknowns here, and this is one place we probably don't need to be guinea pigs, uh, particularly given our access routes through the canyon. So, uh, that's coming from all the trustees. Uh, I've been looking for a motion from any trustee regarding Resolution 2021-03.
This is Julian. I move that we approve Resolution 2021-03, opting out of marijuana hospitality establishments.
And I'd second.
Second that.
I think trustee Kumsesmail got in there slightly faster on the second. So we have a motion and a second on the table. Miranda?
Trustee Kumsesmail. Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee App.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth. Protip Baumhover.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin. Yes. Mayor Larson.
Yes. Resolution is unanimously passed. All right. Thank you, everyone. Um, next on our agenda is, oh, a rate study overview or update. Um, I believe this one will be introduced by Chris Pelletier.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Mayor, and, and the rest of the board. Um, so Andrew and Hannah are here tonight with Raph Ellis and they presented to you back in July, I think. Um, and gave you an overview of essentially what they do as rate consultants. And then, um, at your last BOT meeting, um, JVA, the Town's On Call Engineers, they presented the MIP uh, utility update and which dovetails with the, the rate study in that it helps to quantify and, um, the future needs, uh, of projects, um, that may or may not need to occur in, in, in the next 10 years. And it helps inform Raph Ellis to present, um, rate changes to ensure that, um, Netherlands is, is fiscally sustainable into the future. So, um, without any delay, uh, um, Andrew, I'll just pass this over to Andrew and Hannah to make their presentation and, um, and present their findings. So, uh, that's it.
Thanks, Chris. Um, I'm hopefully trying to share my screen with the, uh, presentation. But, uh, so hopefully I get that up. But thanks for the introduction. Um, the, the objective tonight, and I know, you know, often with water.
Andrew, I think we just lost you somehow. You may need to press star six if you're on the phone.
Okay, I was showing as unmuted, but I, hopefully, can everyone hear me now? Great. Thank you. Sorry about that. Um, so, uh, the, the intent tonight, you know, in these types of discussions, people want to kind of often go right to the rate structure and talk about the rates and, you know, whether tiered and what's in the fixed and, you know, different types of customers. But, uh, as Chris indicated, the, uh, capital plan and the multi-year capital environment, really how we fund it and what we undertake is, uh, has, has a pretty significant driver in, in terms of what, what the rates, uh, look like, uh, because of how much revenue we want to recover. So that, that's the crux of the discussion today is, you know, before we get into tiered or fixed or, uh, how we want to recover this ultimately from individual customers. We, we wanted to update the board, uh, with some directional items and get some input and some feedback. Um, that then, you know, we'll be able to take that, integrate that, and, and our next discussion will be on rate alternatives and and the rates themselves. Um, so the, the presentation today, and, you know, it had been a while, it was back in, in, uh, July, as, as Chris had indicated, uh, where we've done kind of an overview of the study and, and our approach to things. So we've got a little bit of, of just that sort of refresher or reminder, if you will. And then really getting into the water fund, uh, results and scenarios and sewer fund results and scenarios is, uh, the, the crux of it. And then I'm, I'm joined again tonight by my colleague Hannah Palmer-Dore, who's going to be, uh, presenting, uh, some of this and, and I'm going to be presenting some of this as well. So we're going to be sort of trading, trading off, um, and, and certainly, you know, the intent is to get feedback. And, and so as we go through the presentation, we'll pause at, at different kind of breakpoints and, and, you know, if there's any kind of questions. Um, and certainly if there are any, we'll, we'll continue and, and take, uh, questions or discussion at the end. Uh, but, uh, we're, we're trying to stay at a high level, but the same, uh, uh, element, you know, can be technical. So, uh, we want to make sure that, uh, uh, somebody doesn't get stuck on a question. And then, um, you know, we, we're going through a lot of information here. So, uh, before I get started, just the, you know, kind of MSRB SEC requirement that, uh, Raph Ellis is a registered municipal advisor in terms of, and in this case, you know, we're looking at external funding, uh, debt in addition to, uh, revenues and rates and, and reserves. And so before the, the town issues future debt, um, is just a, you know, recommendation to engage, uh, financial advisor or, uh, some of the programs through the state to kind of help through that, uh, process as well as bond capital, as, uh, the town has done in the past. Um, so this is just a bit of a high-level overview. And these essentially, you know, this multi-step process is what we're completing as part of our study. As Chris indicated, you know, the capital plan is a huge input. And, and sometimes we do these studies where uh, something like the MIP was done recently or maybe not as recent. It, it's extremely complimentary to have the outcomes of the JVA analysis be a key input, uh, for our findings. Um, and, uh, so that, that was kind of, you know, is, is, that was being refined. We were sitting back a bit. Um, but, uh, with the final capital plan in our hands, we, we've worked with uh, Karen and Chris, uh, to kind of refine and prioritize some things. And, and there's some direction we received and kind of a recommendation in terms of funding and amounts that will really, you know, we're looking to solidify today. And this is really part of step two, because if, you know, we're trying to increase X amount, uh, that's twice as much as, you know, the other scenarios that, uh, it's good to have that resolved before then looking at multiple alternatives and, and how to recover that same amount of revenue. Uh, that, those next steps, and, and we'll kind of talk about those at the end of the presentation. Um, once we get a kind of firm, uh, direction and, and buy-in in terms of the recommended overall big picture plan, then, uh, we'll finalize our plant investment fee, uh, recommendations, integrate those in, into this overall financial plan, and then look at rate alternatives in terms of, you know, we've got a, a set amount of revenue we're trying to cover from rates and how, how we do that and, and, uh, different manner, if you will. And as always, you know, we kind of sometimes get to the end even of that fourth step and we reassess, you know, with bill impacts or other, uh, um, drivers, you know, or we, we achieve any objectives we, we sought out to achieve at the beginning. And, you know, sometimes things sound really good on paper. And then, you know, how the impacts to customers or how quickly we're trying to change something may cause us to, you know, kind of dial things back or, or, you know, kind of reassess, um, uh, ultimately, uh, what we want to implement. Um, so be- before I get into, and we get into kind of the financial plan, it's important to understand the enterprise fund status uh, for the town's water and wastewater utilities. Is, I imagine everybody knows, you know, we've got the taxpayer bill of rights. And, uh, one component of that is it limits, uh, the amount of revenue that can come from Colorado. So this includes state taxes as well as local taxes. In the case of, uh, the town utilities, that's sales taxes primarily. Um, so anything above 10%, then it's no longer an enterprise fund for issuing debt. And this is, you know, something if you're going through that process, there's, it's based on the previous years. And, uh, as is noted, you know, the 20 to 30% of the revenues, uh, in the 21 budget for water and sewer separately is identified, come from sales taxes. So just on the surface, um, any additional debt we would, uh, embark upon, we'll, we'll need voter approval. And this also, even if we were to kind of try and say, and some communities say, okay, get it down under 10, we'll have to increase rates to, to do that, to replace the revenues. And then we're okay. Well, uh, as the town, you know, aggressively pursues many grant programs, those that are funded by the state and through state taxes also factor into this, uh, kind of taper question in the 10% limit. Uh, so for, for that, these reasons and the amount and the history and really the intent of having this revenue stream, uh, we're moving forward with a couple of options. And one of them is, um, and we'll kind of highlight this later, but we're going to need some external funding in order to fund the capital plan without substantial increases to rates. And, uh, the second component is we're anticipating that, you know, we're going to be guarding the voters and as the town has in the past, and um, we'll, we'll need that voter approval prior to issuing debt. So we're kind of assuming that that happens uh, in, in order to present these plans and, and, um, but that's a, that's one of the requirements. So I'm going to briefly touch on just big picture, kind of what we're doing. And, and this is a bit of a refresher of, uh, similar information that was presented, uh, back in July. Um, so overall, we're looking out, uh, for a 10-year period, in this case, 21 through 2030. And, and to do that, we're, we're starting with and taking the budget and then the multi-year capital plan that's been prioritized uh, by the town and JVA and, and a result of the JVA study, as well as, uh, operation and maintenance expenses, debt service. And we're forecasting those out into the future. So we're applying inflation and what we think, you know, the amount of capital is going to be required and then the debt service that results from that portion we may fund through, through debt. Um, and then on the revenue side, we've got user charges based on rates that are in place today. And we're anticipating growth and, and actually, you know, some, some materially significant growth in the near term. Uh, and so those new customers become rate payers when they connect to the system. But they also pay the, uh, one-time plant investment fees. So those, these revenues, as well as our miscellaneous revenues, as well as sales taxes, all factored into the picture. And then the last element are financial policies, and we'll cover what they are. Uh, they're, they're certainly prudent. I don't think they're excessive. And, uh, so, um, we factor those all in and, and assessing the question. Uh, adjusted for growth and inflation, are our current rates sufficient to meet the needs? And really achieve those financial policies. And I'll talk about what that means in a second. Uh, if not, uh, then we'll identify potential rate adjustments. And, and that's in effect what we've done. And, uh, what we're going to be talking about today is, is those indication, indicated rate increases that are necessary in order to fund, uh, requirements and achieve all our goals. So that, these, these are really the goals that we set out. And uh, first and foremost, we separate and look at the two, uh, utilities as separate for financial planning purposes as well as rate setting. And our first goal is to fund the expenses and the, as adjusted and as identified, um, and, um, all of them. And then there's two financial performance, uh, thresholds. One of them is, uh, relative to debt that the town has issued and anticipates that, you know, we will be issuing. And it's an annual test that we must meet. It's a loan covenant agreement the town's entered into. So that's the first one. It's not necessarily cash one. We're going to talk about what this is, to review it. And then the second one is, is the town has established a minimum floor, really, where we don't want to have our cash reserves get below 90 days or 25% of ONM. And, uh, this is kind of what I'd consider to be kind of a minimum requirement. It's, it's not excessive and it just reflects that, you know, as a utility business, we provide a service, we bill for it, uh, and then we're paid. So there, there, there's a lag between when the costs are incurred and, and when revenue comes in the door. And that's, that's really what that 90 days is, is intended to, to pick up, uh, is, is that lag. Uh, to dig a little deeper into debt service coverage, as I mentioned before, this is a financial test. It's a performance test. We do it each year. And it's measured with, we have all revenues within this fund. And then we subtract our operation and maintenance costs, personnel, utilities, consumables, maintenance. Um, the idea is that, you know, we're paying our, uh, you know, in this case, you know, personnel or our current liabilities first, and then debt service comes next. So the lender in this case, and often the case, the state puts this requirement to ensure that there's sufficient revenue to not only pay the debt service, but the legal requirement is 110% of the debt service in a given year. Debt service goes up, this, the, the ability to, to meet this test becomes more difficult. And another way of kind of looking at this is for every dollar in annual debt service we have in either one of these funds, we need a dollar 10 in revenues after we've paid our own expenses. Now, this is before capital, so it's sort of like ONM, debt service, and then capital. Um, for rate setting, uh, we're targeting a higher, more conservative threshold. We just don't want to set rates and plan on the, the kind of legal razor, uh, margin, if you will. And, uh, so we're recommending rates be based on achieving 130% or, or 1.3 times annual debt service. And, and one of the reasons is we're allowed to include legally one-time plant investment fee revenues. Those fluctuate. Um, and, and the other element is, you know, sometimes our revenues fall for a variety of reasons or our costs are a little bit higher. And so it gives, uh, some cushion and, and it's just, uh, proved.
It looks like Andrew was, he was also calling in from the phone, as I'm sure people saw. And it looks like maybe he got disconnected.
Hannah, are you on and able to take over?
Hannah will need to press star six, I believe, Hannah, to, to speak.
Sorry about that. Um, the, it seems like every once in a while, uh, whatever the dial-in number or my cell phone provider, uh, decides I've been on the phone too long and just kicks me off. Second, uh, presentation that's happened too while I was talking. So it's a little, little awkward. Sorry about that. Um, so in, in terms of the process, and this is really how we've used this tool, is, you know, we're, we're looking out. It, it helps us optimize the CIP and, uh, take the outputs of, of, uh, the JVA study and the, a lot, a lot of that work and, and basically say, okay, you know, that, there, there was a ton of work that went into that. It's a multi-year plan. How are we going to be able to fund it? And, yeah, given that resources are limited and we can't always. And, yeah, given that resources are limited, and we can't always do everything we want to do, uh, right away, uh, there's some level of prioritization, or in this case as well, we're, we've identified some external capital funding sources. Um, it, it also look, allows us to kind of look beyond the budget year, kind of look out, uh, i- i- further into the future, and if we've got kind of a big bogey or, uh, significant capital item, we can start taking steps today, uh, to, to flatten out the requirements and, and really levelize things, uh, rather than sort of waiting, and then it becomes a much more significant, uh, gap or rate increase, and, and that's certainly, uh, much, much harder for customers, uh, to, to absorb, uh, right away, rather than kind of more frequent, uh, smaller adjustments, even if they're, uh, kind of significant adjustments. In, in terms of the overall forecast assumptions, and we've had roughly about 1% growth, and then specific developments in the near term, uh, that have been identified and moving forward, uh, through the process. That generates plant investment fee revenue, as well as new customers to share in economies of scale. Uh, sales taxes, I mentioned earlier, uh, beyond the, the kind of 21 budget that showed a step up in that, uh, we're, we're anticipating about 3%, uh, pretty kind of conservative projection, uh, annual growth each year. Um, and then we've got some other revenues we're anticipating kind of going up for inflation and interest earnings. On the expense side, it's generally, most of them, we're anticipating, you know, inflationary increase about 3%. Uh, personnel, um, we, we anticipate being a little bit higher than that, at 4.5%, and then our capital, uh, we're anticipating about 2% annually. And we're sort of applying that, and, and that's also consistent with, as JVA had kind of evaluated that CIP inflationary number in their study, and, and so we're kind of, you know, consistent with, with that, uh, within our plan. In terms of external funding, in this case, uh, low-interest loans, we're, we're anticipating that the state revolving fund loan is going to be kind of our default, our primary, um, lending source for, for debt that we have to, uh, we're issuing that we need to pay back. Uh, we're anticipating 3% interest rate, that's a little bit above or above what the state's lending at today. Um, and, and certainly, you know, this, this area of sensitivity, particularly debt issues that are further out. Um, overall, we've got a 30-year repayment term, and just some other components of, of the state's program. We want to be a little conservative, uh, but, uh, not, not too much that, that we kind of put our, I thought, on the scale, and particularly when it comes to, to borrowings, um, because, you know, interest rates certainly fluctuate, and they've been pretty low for a long time. Um, when it comes to grants, we're really not relying on any, I, you know, we know that the town certainly pursues them and will pursue them, and, and that'll just make the plans better, um, that, that we have, but i- i- it's just not good, uh, practice or policy to set rates anticipating grants that haven't been applied for. And it is often the case, you know, the funding environment can be changed, uh, maybe we're entering a period where there's going to be more of these available, but, um, you know, in the past, when the state economy turned down, the energy and mineral impact grant, the, the state legislature ra- rated that to balance the budget, and, uh, anybody that, that was relying on that for grants that hadn't been approved, that funding source was, was gone for a couple of years. So, it is generally a good idea not to count on them. And I know JVA identified several, uh, great programs, um, in, in addition to those tied or administered by the state, as well as federal, and, and more niche ones that, uh, could be good candidates for, uh, the capital program that, uh, the town has for the two utilities. So with that, and, uh, before I hand it off to Hannah to talk about the Waterfund Financial Plan, I just wanted to pause to see if there are any kind of, you know, questions or clarifying items at this point, um, and, and certainly Mayor, if you want us to keep going, just let me know, and, and we'll, we'll keep going and wait till the end.
Uh, we'll just give a quick here, 10 seconds. Any trustees have questions on that part of the presentation, now, anytime, speak up, or you can save it till the end if you're chewing on a lot of it. Back to you, Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, with that, I will hand the microphone to Hannah, and, uh, put my cellphone near here.
Thanks, Andrew. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
It takes some time. Great, so we'll dive into the Waterfund Financial Plan with that great background that Andrew just provided. Uh, could you go to the next slide, please, Andrew? So as Andrew indicated, um, one of the big drivers that we're trying, trying to meet for the financial plan is funding all of our capital projects. And the major projects for the study period, 2021 through 2030, um, that, these were identified by JVA. They total about $12.9 million worth of costs on the water side. And these are broken down into two different segments by JVA, so we've reflected that here. Those are system-wide costs, and these are costs that will relate to all customers in the system, things like the wastewater, I'm sorry, the water treatment plant expansion, or the water distribution system, and those total about $7 million. And then we have neighborhood-specific projects, and I think there are two or three big, big projects that are anticipated in the later years. And one of the big highlights here is that these, these total almost $6 million, these make up almost half of the total water capital program. So keep that in mind as we go forward to our next slide, Andrew. And this slide breaks out that summary into yearly costs. So from 2021 to, again, 2030, we have the total water capital, and you'll see in 2025, 2026, and 2029, these are the big projects. So this means, one good thing is that we actually have some time to plan for these. We have some time to decide how we're funding these, either that, building up reserves, finding grants, identifying, uh, debt and, debt issuances, or something else. Uh, another thing to keep in mind is the 2026 and 2029 spikes, those costs projected are mostly related to neighborhood-specific projects. So the, about $6 million there. Let's go to the next slide, Andrew. So what we did with that capital planning, with the capital improvement plan that, uh, JVA created for us, was create four funding scenarios, and this matrix shows those scenarios that we modeled. So here we show the parts of the CIP each scenario funds, that is, the system-wide CIP, or the neighborhood-specific CIP, as well as the funding mechanism, so cash, debt, or grants. And we'll go through each one of these scenarios here. Scenario one is a fully-funded CIP, so everything that JVA said this is what you'll need, we've included in this scenario, and we funded it with cash. Scenario two is, again, all the projects on the CIP, and instead of funding entirely with cash, we split it into cash and debt. Scenario three is where we start looking at a little bit of a different capital plan. So this is the limited plan, where all neighborhood-specific projects are, have we have been in, we've not included those. So the system-wide projects are fully funded, but not the system wide, but not the neighborhood-specific projects. Similar to the scenario two, however, we are using a mixture of cash and debt in this scenario. And finally, scenario four, this takes a limited CIP, as in scenario three, and funds it with a mix of cash, debt, and grant. As Andrew mani, as Andrew mentioned before, uh, planning your rates around, is anticipating receiving grants, especially farther in the future, is not an ideal scenario, this is where the crystal walls tend to get a little fuzzy. So, we actually didn't model specific scenarios for scenario four, we're waiting for the town to identify projects that they're likely to see grants, and we see this more as an an, an optimistic view of scenario three. And it, so this also assumes, I'm sorry, let me go back to scenario three, which also assumes that we would create some sort of improvement district to pay for neighborhood-specific projects. Um, next slide, Andrew. So what do these scenarios actually look like? Um, taking scenario one, where we have the full capital improvement plan, and we fund it entirely with cash, this is what a typical monthly residential water user, using 3,000 gallons of metered use per month, would see in their bills. And this is a pretty aggressive scenario. Um, we really want to highlight that scenario one is unrealistic, this really highlights the need for external funding sources. Let's go to the next slide, Andrew. So setting scenario one aside for the moment, let's take a look at scenario two. Scenario two, as a reminder, assumes all projects will be funded, but splits the funding source between cash and debt. And larger system-wide projects, and all scenario, all, um, neighborhood-specific projects, we've assumed will be funded with debt here. So that's about $9.6 million worth of projects are funded with debt. 3.3 million of those projects will be funded with cash, and it, again, we have a total of about $12.9 million. Thank you, Andrew. And scenario three, this is a, a lot different from that previous slide, we see scenario three, uh, the, where the utility will fund system-wide projects using a combination of cash and debt, and we assume neighborhood projects will be funded outside the utility through an improvement district, so repaid through neighborhood assessments or other taxes. Um, because the neighborhood-specific projects are such a large percentage of our total capital improvement program, removing them results in a lower total cost. So that $12.9 million total is now 6.9 million. And the portion of our debt-funded CIP will also decrease compared to the previous scenario, as that scenario assumed all neighborhood-specific projects were to be debt-funded. We also see a little bit of an increase in the cash funding here, um, in comparison to the previous scenario, and we'll get into that a little bit later. Andrew, so to fund this limited CIP, the rate revenue increases that we've identified are shown here. Starting in July of 2021, those rate increases will need to be 7% annually until 2025, when they will increase to 8% annually until, in 2025 and 2026. So these increases will provide sufficient revenue to meet everything that Andrew spoke about in our opening. We'll be able to fund operating expenses, debt service, the limited capital program that we've, that we've identified, and meet our debt service coverage as well as reserve requirements. So what does this rate increase mean for a typical residential bill, and how does it compare to the other scenarios we've shown? So this, this graph shows scenarios one, two, and three. So that really high light blue bill was the first one that we saw. Yellow is the color of the limited CIP scenario. So under scenario one, where we were looking at about $160 increase over five years, scenario three, the difference between 2021 and 2026 is about $20 for a residential user using 3,000 gallons of metered, uh, usage per month. And of course, this will change depending on if they use more, say, in the summer, their bill might go up, if they are using more to irrigate, less if they're using less than 3,000 gallons of metered usage per month. Uh, next slide, Andrew. So, um, we're going to stop here and ask again for questions, I know we just covered quite a bit, and I want to make sure that everybody has a chance to clarify anything that they may be tossing around in the head.
Uh, I have a question. It seems like the neighborhood projects are what we can't afford, um, and would be causing all the rates to go up, or causing extreme burden on the small neighborhood. What are the possibilities of scrapping those projects?
Scrapping them completely?
No, go ahead, Hannah, I'm sorry.
It seems like it, the debt is unsustainable to take it on as a town, it also seems way too much to put upon the neighborhoods. Um, I mean, it, it just doesn't add up one way or the other. And I, I don't think this has been discussed that much, really.
Andrew, why don't you go?
The neighborhood projects.
It, it's a, yeah, I mean, it's a fair question, and then kind of the way that we dealt it, at least, dealt with it in terms of the recommended scenario, which is the one that, that Hannah just covered, the scenario three, is that, you know, the improvement district, right? And, and so, I mean, I, you know, I, I don't know that, you know, I, we haven't assessed exactly what that impact would be, uh, but it's more philosophical, and the idea of, you know, kind of system-wide and all ratepayers contributing, uh, to fund something that's, you know, sort of benefiting just the small neighborhood. So I certainly defer to Chris, or maybe, you know, some of this discussion in terms of what's driving those improvements, um, and, and whether it's an option to completely just not do them, or if it's, if it's looking to, you know, assessments and kind of that neighborhood-based funding to more directly fund them. Um, and there may be debt to those.
We're talking billions of dollars to be passed on to certain neighborhoods. Um, that's a lot.
It, it's certainly a fair comment, and, and I just, I guess I defer, um, you know, now or later to Chris in terms of, go ahead.
These projects are not written in stone. These are the ones that have been identified as part of our capital improvement project, and are being budgeted for with the idea that, yeah, we'd like to do them, but when we, when it comes to actually doing them, then that would be where we'd end and say, and start looking at, is this something the whole town takes on, is this something the neighborhood takes on, is this something that we defer until a later date?
Yeah. I gotta say, either scenario looked really bad. I mean, for town to take it on, it raised the rates, everybody by like three times, and for the individual neighborhood to take it on would be, I mean, talk about cost of living, I mean, forget about it, it would be pretty bad. So, yeah, I guess that's for a future discussion.
Yeah. Go ahead, Chris. I'll add something in here to, you know, for a planning perspective, it's important to, to see the numbers on paper. Um, we're only looking at water right now, and, and oh, in the back of our minds, um, we're talking about sewer, and how do we?
Wait, this wasn't even the sewer project we're looking at? Okay.
This, we're only on water right now, and so, um, I want to be clear about that, this, there is water in big springs, and it will need to be upgraded into the future, it doesn't have to happen next year. There are only four-inch water lines in big springs, um, and that doesn't satisfy, um, fire suppression sufficiently, um, but it, it does work, you know, we do have fires up there, and we are able to put them out. Um, but in the future, we do need to think about, you know, how are we going to upgrade this, and what does that cost? And that's the point of this exercise, it doesn't have to happen now or in 2026, but we should start thinking about it. So it is really important to at least put it on paper, understand, um, what these expenses are.
Okay.
Did anybody else have any questions for the moment? We can go into the wastewater.
Ready for the wastewater treatment?
Perfect, I'll pass it on back to Andrew.
Thanks, Hannah. Uh, similar overview and, and similar kind of, uh, set of information, just the, the dirtier, or dirty water. Um, so, the overall capital plan's a little less extensive, and, um, you know, the, the kind of similar system-wide or neighborhood-specific, the, the, I guess, the couple of comments are, I know, I know the town has invested in the wastewater treatment plant, uh, recently, and, and that's one of the reasons why we're seeing a little bit more of, of the capital be focused in on collection system improvements. And, um, the, the other kind of just highlight is proportionally, the neighborhood project's a higher dollar amount overall, but also, it's a, it's about two-thirds of, of the capital over the 10-year period. So, as we highlight, and kind of work through those same scenarios that Hannah presented on the water side, uh, we're, we're going to see even kind of substant, proportionally bigger impact of, uh, of how the neighborhood, uh, projects kind of get funded and, and their impact on, on the customers. So, overall, um, it's a little flatter CIP, is, I mentioned a lot of its collection system, we had some treatment plant improvements towards the end, but, uh, really, kind of in the middle period here, this is largely the neighborhood projects, and, and that's where we see, uh, the, the kind of bigger spike, and, um, so, overall, same amount of capital, it's been inflated, but really getting, you know, under this first scenario, uh, through or, or funding, uh, up until '26 is driving the need, um, as we'll see in a minute, to, to pretty substantially increase user charges and rates. Before I get into the numbers, and, you know, Hannah did a great job of presenting and kind of talking about these, it's, it's the same scenarios, um, we're, we're going kind of through the same steps. And just to highlight based on the question, under scenarios three and four, we're anticipating that the neighborhood projects are either just not completed, or completed and, and funded outside of, uh, the water and sewer utilities. Um, the, the, the other kind of element when it comes to grant funding, you know, as Hannah indicated, we just don't want to rely on it. We, we know that, you know, we're, we're going to pursue it, and if awarded, it, it basically improves, uh, what is scenario three. improves what is scenario three. As we get towards the end and some of the kind of direction, we're looking for scenario three is the recommended scenario in terms of staff and Rafftelis. But that's why, one of the reasons we're here today is have this discussion and sort of confirm this before we then, as I said earlier, go and develop rates. So just, you know, for the variety of reasons, and not least of which, if we cash fund all of the capital, this 12, almost 13 million dollars, including the neighborhood projects, and really to get to that 2026 and fund everything in cash, and our existing O&amp;M and debt service we have on the books, and need to continue paying, we take a bill, you know, 90 bucks a month for typical customer, and a little bit less than that, I'm sorry, the percentage increase is a little more substantial, and right away, it's just under $100, and by the end of 2026. So if, you know, it's just not practical. It's not realistic to try and execute this plan, and certainly I wouldn't expect the board to endorse this plan. This really crystallizes the need as we continue to look at the other scenarios for external funding. This 8.3 million, while the individual project may kind of vary, that's the, you know, essentially the same amount of the neighborhood projects. So we're effectively debt-funding those neighborhood projects, including the spikes, to help kind of flatten out our requirements. So we don't need to generate, you know, $10 million to fund capital in five years. So this certainly helps, and the balance, about a third of the capital program, we're funding through cash, and as denoted in the kind of lighter blue bars. But doing this and executing this still has pretty significant pressure on rates, and what may characterize is also a bit unrealistic, is the comment a minute ago, I think would echo. And so that's one of the reasons why, you know, when we look at the scenario where the neighborhood projects are headed outside of the two utilities, and we're not looking for the entire enterprise and the entire fund and all ratepayers to help pay these back, we're able to 100% cash fund everything. And this kind of flat capital requirement with a little bit of a treatment plant spike in the backend is really very equipped with building this into our rates. And then we've got recurring capital replacements, collection system improvements, essentially built into our rates and the amount that we're covering each year. And that's essentially what we're able to do, in part because of the investments the town has made in the treatment plant, so we've got capacity to serve new customers for the same period of time, until we get kind of closer to that at the end of the period. So in terms of, again, and the typical customer for water and sewer are basically the same. There really isn't a lot of outdoor watering, so this is in a sense indoor watering of roughly 3,000 gallons a month. And so just kind of these three scenarios, the light blue, 100% cash, darker blue, cash and debt, but where all the capital is funded, and then the yellow, similar to water, where we've got a limited CIP, and we're using, in this case, all cash to do it, but certainly debt is available if the need arises. So the most, the largest level of rate increases is under that third scenario, where the bill today increases, you know, $3 to $4 a month each year with those 7 to 8%, gets to about 5, or closer to 5, in the back end of the period with the 8% increases. So over this, you know, essentially six-year period, the bill, you know, would go up maybe $25, and kind of broken out over that six-year period, as I depicted a minute ago. And these percentage amounts, and I know ultimately, you know, the bill for typical customers is a good way, a good bellwether to compare and contrast, as well as understanding how a typical customer may be impacted. But if we were to just sort of, you know, another way of looking at is if we apply these across the board to all customers, essentially everybody's bill would go up 5%. And I know we're going to look at rate alternatives in the second part of the study, where we may look to recover this differently, but just in terms of understanding the impact, if, you know, you're a larger user, commercial user, under this scenario, you know, we're looking to recover 5% a year from everybody. And that's sort of that kind of flat requirement. I apologize, I was quoting the water rate increases. These are 5% a year, it just kind of rounds up to that 5 as things compound. So just to sort of land on this, and coming back to the impact to typical residential customer for this scenario, we've got them increasing, starting in 2021, rates going in effect mid-year in July, and then more typical kind of effective date, earlier in the year, anticipated each year, starting in '22, and as depicted here, running through the study period, but we're really focusing on the five to six years, as was indicated earlier. Going out a little bit further, so crystal ball gets a little fuzzier in terms of kind of this disparate impact. I've got a couple more slides, and maybe I'll just finish out and not pause it at this time for questions. You know, a couple items in this question, in these types of presentations, often, you know, comes up, whether it's from Chris or Karen, or the Board of Trustee members, how do we compare? And, you know, Netherlands is a unique community, and, you know, and that's always, every community is a bit unique, and we get into the water and wastewater system. So it's difficult to do these comparisons across communities, because, you know, there's more variables. But it's an important question to be able to answer. So rather than just, you know, compare this to Denver or metro area communities, we tried to select those that have a similar kind of dynamic, whether it's the density of the customers, or just the diseconomies of scale. And so between Hayden, Estes Park, Idaho Springs, Leadville, and Lyons, we just focus in on those five, and excluding Netherlands, the average typical bill or bill for residential customers using 3,000 gallons per month is about $86 a month, when we combine water and wastewater together. So right now, Netherlands is a bit higher than that, and then certainly, under this proposed, which would be the rate later in 2021, that gap would increase a bit as we're looking to recover more from our customers. And some of that has to do with kind of the legacy of the decisions, and I think one of the big factors for Netherlands, and Hannah alluded to this a little bit earlier, and it certainly factors into our rate design, there really isn't a substantial amount of outdoor watering. Where I live in Littleton, you know, I've got a big yard, and so I use a fair amount of water, even, I don't water a lot, and, you know, the grass is kind of brown in the summertime, but it's not unusual for, you know, me to use 20,000 gallons a month in July, and, you know, if I'm not careful, I can get 30,000 or 40,000 gallons if I don't manage the sprinkler system, and really, you know, be tight on watering. There really isn't that amount of outdoor watering, and it's routinely, you know, water systems, and so there's a lot of economies of scale with that large usage, and certainly the bills are higher. But, you know, based on kind of the, you know, just the lots, and as well as community ethic, and just the native landscaping, and, you know, lack of, you know, grass-based yards, there really isn't as much outdoor watering. So unfortunately, what that means is, you know, the volume rates are going to be higher, because we've got some levels of fixed costs, and then we also have fewer units to spread those over. Some of those dynamics occur in Idaho Springs and some of the other communities, but I know, and Chris really asked, put this question to us, is something that comes up often, an observation that, you know, the rates in Netherlands are a bit higher than other communities, and as we look at kind of the usage, we're just really not seeing nearly as much outdoor watering. It's very, very little. So I think this is certainly one of the reasons why. It's not an indication of inefficiency or waste. It's really more the economics and economies of scale that, you know, down in Denver, other suburbs, or places where people put a lot more on their lawn, and they're selling effectively more units, we get more revenue from those uses. So just to kind of sort of cap this discussion, we've taken, under the limited CIP, and really stacked the water and sewer bill in '21, under what we're proposing, and then that forecast that are projected out in '22 and '23, just to, you know, show the combined bill for typical residential customer would go up from what it is today, at about $115, by about $6 in this first step, and then it would continue and kind of trend towards about $7 a month if these are implemented and adopted. Certainly, as we're looking at rate design, this may look at recovering that same amount, and a different mix of fixed and volume, but I just want to kind of get an indication, you know, looking at the total bill, and a lot of information tonight. So with this, this kind of ends the sort of prepared slides. I know we stopped at a couple spots, but again, pause, and certainly open things up for questions or discussion there.
Thank you, Andrew, and thank you, Hannah. Definitely a lot to chew on, and I think, you know, I think we're probably all, you know, very happy that there is an alternative three and four to look at, and not just stuck on alternative one when it comes to how to plan this. What is it you guys need, is there, what is it you're looking for for us tonight? Is there input you're looking for in particular, or?
I think there's really two, maybe three, kind of key elements, that we're looking for some input. The first is, you know, the idea of external funding. I know the town's done that in the past, but just, you know, the idea of looking to fund some of our CIP with debt, getting that kind of head nod versus, you know, if the direction was go all with cash, then that would, it would look like a different financial plan. And really related to that, I mean, the, how the neighborhood projects are handled. The limited CIP that kind of has that outside of the utility is the direction we were heading in, but again, before we develop alternatives, we wanted to have this discussion to sort of, at least for planning purposes, for, you know, this study and what we're looking at, get, you know, thumbs up or confirmation that that makes sense. And so those were the two main pieces of input direction that we were looking for tonight.
All right. Thank you for that. I mean, speaking for myself, I think, yeah, the external funding is something our town's been very successful with in the past, through the hard work of Chris and other, Chris and Karen and the rest of town staff. So I think that's definitely the direction we want to be looking in the future, is that external funding piece. And I think just the presentation you put before us makes the limited CIP sort of the thing we need to be sort of planning on and looking towards, because as trustee Corvallin brought up, you know, the impact of those local projects is pretty significant, and I think going to need significant discussion by future boards when we get closer to some of those projects, and to figure out how to really equitably fund those. So that would be my personal view, and I'm going to pass this on to one else. The one other thing I just wanted to point out for trustees and all, you know, this is, you guys were very clear that this is the debt and cash service options. And, you know, Chris Pelletier has been incredibly good at finding his grants. So if the, if we were, if, I know we don't want to plan for this, but it would have a, you know, our current fortune and success in getting grants would significantly reduce the cost of some of these, and reduce the impact on the users. We just don't want to be planning for that because of the uncertainties five years out. Is that right?
Yes, yeah. And, you know, even, yeah, that's it exactly, that we don't want to be banking on them. Because if we don't get the grant, you know, largely, you know, the project will still need to be done. Yeah, you got it, barring, you know, other variables.
All right. Well, then, let's just go through the trustees, find out if their views on the cash versus external funding, and also the limited versus full CIP plan, and other, any other comments and questions you have for Rafftelis here, beginning with trustee Apt.
Thank you for a very thorough presentation. I guess I have a couple of questions. One thing, it's frustrating to see how much more we're going to pay in Netherlands versus other comparable communities, but it is what it is. And I think what you were saying was, if we were using 30,000 gallons apiece, it would be more economical. I'm making a joke.
To, yeah, right. I mean, to a point. You have a different water system, too, so that it may cost more to have that water system, but yeah.
Yeah, you guys, in the Denver suburbs, just gobble up the water at enormous rates and pay less. So I guess that's one of the problems with our state. So, yeah, I agree with the mayor, limited CIP, and look for external funding, and hope things cost less than they do. I guess one thing that we had requested as a board was a way to incentivize conservation, so that if you use more, you pay more, et cetera. And I guess we aren't looking at that sort of thing in this particular phase. Is that correct?
That's correct. We want kind of the direction on the big picture, any amount of revenue, and that's one of the items that was highlighted in the July meeting, and certainly something that we'll be looking at when we look at rate alternatives, is, you know, that sort of conservation or tiered base system, as well as, you know, how much conservation may be there. And so that'll be part of the future discussion, once we get sort of direction of whether we're up here with our funding requirements, we're down here, and then we'll look at those alternatives that generate the same amount of revenue, and how they may impact different customers, and achieve some of the other objectives we have as a town and water and sewer systems.
Okay. Thank you.
And Alan, if I could, I wanted to point out that in that slide, I think it was 34, where it showed the different differences in the communities, yeah. You'll notice that Netherlands is actually has the cheapest water rates, with the exception of Boulder of all those communities. So it's really the sewer that is very impactful to the users and expensive, and a lot of that is just the, there's just not that many users to spread the cost. But I just want to point that out, because I'm with you, I don't want to conserve, I don't think people should start using 30,000 gallons of water. We probably couldn't keep up, quite honestly. But I just want to point that out, that actually, you know, Netherlands' water rates aren't bad. It's the sewer that we have challenges with.
Right. So we just need to be able to flush their toilets less often.
Doesn't matter.
Thank you.
Um, that wouldn't matter, right? Because you get charged for the input of the water, not the output. So flush away.
Tanya, you're on. You want to have, you have any questions, comments, or?
I was just commenting on Alan's comment.
Yeah, I know. I just figured you're on, and you'd unmuted, so.
I'm already done. I mean, there's not much to talk about. It's really great information. Thank you.
Um, trustee Danforth.
Yeah, I was just wondering, with this rate study, you know, we only talked about, you know, rates per resident, but we didn't talk about plant investment fees, or tap fees and stuff like that. Does that have any impact on this, or does this, did that get talked about in our overall plan?
The brief answer is that that's also, as we look at rate alternatives, we'll have the outcomes of the plant investment fee evaluation. We certainly factored in growth, but to be a little conservative and not presumptuous, we're anticipating existing plant investment fees, you know, with some levels of, I think, inflation are maintained. So, you know, as we come back, or we factor into recommendation that growth isn't paying its own way, there's a bigger gap, you know, some, similar to the 14-rate study, or if there, even if it's, you know, 5% gap, we'll close it and integrate it within the plan. So everything else being equal, that would certainly help, you know, all scenarios, and kind of the same amount. So, you know, the short answer is that we are looking at those one-time growth-related revenues. We haven't factored them in yet, and we haven't finalized our valuation. But next time when we talk, when we have rate alternatives, we'll have the plant investment fee recommendation factored into both the financial plan, as well as integrated within whatever kind of rates or rate alternatives we're looking for.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm just wondering if you guys have the numbers for how many, how much that we get from plant investment fees each year? Is there an average amount that we're seeing, a trend, or anything like that?
I imagine, you know, Hannah may be able to pull that, just from our financial plans. I, you know, it depends on level of growth, so certainly in years where we've got some specific developments coming online, that's going to increase the amount. And historically, I don't know if we've got a number handy, but we certainly can provide that. I don't know if, if we've got a number handy, but we certainly can provide that. I mean, I think generally, you know, the kind of plant investment fee revenues in the near term is a little bit higher than what it's averaged historically. And that's more of an outcome of the amount of development and new growth that's occurring right now.
And to answer your question directly, the model that we have that we're currently projecting a 1% development, 1% increase in development each year, so there's 1% of additional growth on top of the current accounts and a handful of developments that were identified in the next 10 years. The average revenue for water is about $55,000 per year. Wastewater, the PIF fee is, I believe it's $2,000 less per three-quarter inch tap. So it's, it's just a little less than 55,000.
Okay.
And of course, that will change.
Those fees don't. Yeah. So those fees don't really have a huge impact on our overall budget.
No, not, not ultimately. In years where we are anticipating a larger development to go into, that, a larger development to pay their fee, I should say, not to actually be developed, but when they pay their fee, they, we do see a little bit of an uptick in revenue from that. But they're not really moving the needle too much, especially early on in the financial plan.
Okay. So we couldn't rely on those hypothetically to help offset, you know, any specific projects that we have right now?
Only minimally. So they certainly wouldn't be funding the neighborhood-specific projects, for example?
Yeah.
Those look expensive. That'd be a big neighborhood, right?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Lindsay, are you in favor of the, the external funding, limited CIP approach as well?
Yes, I am. Option number three, I think, looks like the best option to me.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Cooms Ismail.
Limited CIP, external funding, for sure. I think that's the only way we get these projects done, really the only way we should consider, presented us today, to do it responsibly. Yeah, I do think that whatever we can do to drive these rates down, especially on the sewer side, would be great. I mean, I feel like, to some extent, this has revealed that we already have kind of an incentive to, to be, to conserve and that we kind of already are quite a conservation-minded town, comparatively speaking, and that it may be because of this, our small-scale economy that is causing these fees to go up and then kind of stops people from using a lot of water. So, so maybe we're already sort of doing that in a way that I didn't really realize compared to some other towns around us. And that's kind of an interesting development there. But I would still see, like to see kind of a conservation-minded approach and how that could maybe even help drive down water, these fees, these, you know, general amounts that people would pay per month if they were really low water users. If we can find a way to structure, you know, our rates that, that those folks don't have to pay $121 a month, I think that'd be great.
Hey, trusty Taylor.
Yeah, an excellent presentation and very helpful to see all the options. I'm, I'm seeing some merit in both option two and three, but I'm certainly leaning toward three. I have a quick question about why our rates are so high. Your argument as to that, your argument explaining that made good sense to me. But I'm wondering if, if any of the higher rates are tied to the fact that we have very new equipment and we're amortizing that equipment differently than perhaps Estes Park, which probably has an older installation? Does, does that have any effect on, on these rates, the fact that we've got a new, robust, really good setup right now? And does that imply that at some point, these rates may level off? Just, just a question about if there's anything other than watering the grass that is affecting this, such that long-term, these rates may not look so bad?
Well, and, and I mean, it certainly, you know, static environment, I know, you know, the Estes Park, the sewer utility that is part of that is essentially, you know, completely replacing wastewater treatment plant, and that's not built into their current rates. That, that's kind of a future requirement. So I mean, to your point that kind of where the different communities are on, whether it's regulatory or the age of their infrastructure is certainly one of the things behind the scenes that the rate survey is not going to pick up. In terms of depreciation or the newness of the equipment, we really don't factor in that accounting value in how we set rates. It's based more on the cash needs. But there is certainly debt service and as Chris highlighted, you know, maybe a little bit, might have been a little bit, you know, too high level with the kind of outdoor comment that that does factor, I think, into the water side. But the driver on the sewer side may be, you know, having to do with the number of sewer customers and that debt service is, to finance the wastewater treatment plant improvements is, is one of those cash expenses. So, you know, with that capacity being there, you know, you would, we would anticipate that to kind of level off independent of regulations changing or, you know, some, some of the other drivers. And certainly, these are capital-intensive industries. So, you know, that, that size does end up mattering, that there can be some levels of, I wouldn't call them fully fixed costs, but, you know, they're, they're, the more customers you have to share the treatment plant or even, you know, higher density, you know, then, then, you know, there's fewer customers per mile of pipe. And, and so that can factor into things as well. And, and, you know, kind of rural or communities like Netherlands, you know, this just ends up being one of the costs of a lot of the benefits of living in Netherlands with the, you know, lower densities or geography and, and not having quite the same economy of the scale. And certainly, you know, Chris, you may have some additional input relative to this question from board member Taylor.
Thank you very much.
Jonathan, Mayor Pretend.
Should we motion to extend the meeting real quick?
We are at that point, are we not?
I guess we are. So I'm motion to extend.
I second.
Do we have a second?
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
I don't know if we.
I, I, sorry, Chris, I offered a second.
Okay. Miranda, please.
Are you motioning to extend till 10:30? Is there a date of that time?
10:30.
We'll say 10:30.
Okay.
Why do you do better than that?
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yes.
Trustee apt.
Yes.
Trustee Cooms Ismael.
Yes.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin.
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Baumhofer.
Yes.
All right. Thanks for that question.
Sure. Questions, I guess. I don't have much, a lot of information here between this, the master infrastructure plan. Chewing on a lot of information. I guess I did appreciate Chris Pelletier pointing out, our, our water rates are actually quite competitive with other towns here, looking at that slide. I'm curious, definitely will have to say, it seems like our only option to be reasonable, as trustee Cooms Ismael said, is option three, limited CIP. And, yeah. I would say with that, I'm not fully against the idea of option two, of going with all the CIP. If we can find a way of doing it, potentially maybe some type of a mix with neighborhood improvement districts being matched by kind of overall town funding. So we find a balance there that is equitable for the town. I guess my question is looking at just, this doesn't have a lot of breakdown. Maybe much of that, like 3.5 million in our treatment with sewer is basically on INI mitigation. I was just curious if, Chris, you had an idea?
I don't have the number in front of me, but a good portion of that is INI, and that's where you get the most bang for your buck. It's really what helps to stabilize capacity in the wastewater plant. Because if you, if you're treating groundwater, doesn't matter at what point in the year, the peak point in the year that we exceed a particular threshold that's recognized by the state, that's when the state says, okay, it's time to go into design. Most of the time, we're pretty good. It's a time in May when we do have some damaged infrastructure where, where we exceed that 80% threshold or have the potential to. Now, we've done, made great strides. And that's the point here is we want to keep doing that and fixing our infrastructure, fixing what we have, because at the end of the day, that's what's really going to reduce the cost here and, and kind of put off to the future of having to expand the wastewater.
So along the lines of what Julian was kind of getting on, the idea of potentially stabilizing it, is there any potential where we may, might look on taking on a large amount of debt to do a serious amount of INI mitigation all at once upfront, if we could fit it in our schedule, that would help offset predictably, I guess, in a predictable way, a couple years of the wastewater treatment plant needing more expansion? Seems like, you know, we're looking at expanding and necessary updates to the water treating, you know, collection facility and the water treatment facility. And it seems like we've put a lot of effort into the wastewater treatment plant, particularly the sewer, the biomass, that it would be nice to offset costs. And that's where it seems like our rates are so, you know, are higher than most places is in our wastewater treatment. And while we do have a relatively new system, indication is, is it's going to need updated fairly shortly here if development continues on at a reasonable pace that we've anticipated.
So, you know, I'll probably defer the debt piece to Andrew. But you're on the right track. Fixing what we have, like you said, is going to be the most bang for our buck. Now, we have debt already in the wastewater plant, just because we've taken on several loans. I think we took on two loans to construct the wastewater plant in 2010 or somewhere around there. And then, and then we just took on a loan for the bio solids facility. So you do have to look at that debt ratio number. And again, Andrew can speak to that. So I'm not sure how much more debt take with the wastewater plant. Can he speak to that, Andrew?
Um, yeah, I, you know, we do have capacity, debt service coverage, that ratio in the sewer fund is certainly a little bit healthier and we're, you know, effectively under the limited site CIP, not taking on additional debt. So I mean, it could be something that, you know, certainly could have some benefits. I would maybe hypothesize that I think the capacity is in the sewer plan and kind of the near medium term. So it may not have as much impact in, say, the next three to five years than it will over sort of that, you know, 10 to 20-year time horizon. And, and the other kind of factor, and really this, I defer to JBA and Chris, but just sort of throwing it out there that I think there's some level of prioritization that's built into the sewer capital plan. And while there's economies of scale, kind of doing it all at once is a big project, there is, you know, some parts of the system that may be functioning, you know, well. And, and I don't know if, you know, kind of it's time to replace those, but maybe six, seven, eight, you know, nine years out, then, you know, they would sort of fall into that level of prioritization that their number is up. So, you know, and I, I, again, you know, certainly these are more capital-driven questions, but we're not looking at expansion of the treatment plant in like, say, 23 or 24. And that's where we would see kind of more of that immediate benefit of accelerating things. And, and, you know, it's certainly something we can look at if it makes sense from the infrastructure standpoint to accelerate things. And, and there, we see that economies of scale, if you will, we're saving to the treatment plant.
Sweet. Thank you guys for awesome presentation. A lot more information to chew on. I'm sure we'll be discussing more. That's, those are my main questions for tonight. So we'll pass it off. Let everyone get to sleep.
Thank you.
Well, it sounds like I think you guys got the direction you were looking for from the board.
We did.
Then, yeah. Oh, go ahead.
I just was, you know, the kind of next steps, I've talked about these, but I just thought I'd put that up on the screen, just in terms of, you know, kind of where we go from here.
I had a couple of questions.
Oh, go ahead, Tanya.
Um, was this the rate study we were waiting for to discuss having rates designed to encourage conservation? And so now we're giving them that direction?
That's the next phase. That's what they tackled. This is sort of what the cost is going to be. Now we look at the creative ways to, to fund it.
I see. So that's not right now. So then, and then with the INI, does, does Netherlands have storm, storm drains? I'm not understanding why we have so much stormwater going into our sewer system.
No. We have a collection system that's 50 years old and that is constructed of a ventrified clay pipe, a lot of it. And they're segmented in six-foot sections that have gasketed, they're gasketed together every six feet. So you can imagine, we have 10,000 feet of pipe every six foot, there's a gasket. And those gaskets don't last forever. And in addition to that.
Just the groundwater is permeating into your piping?
Yes.
Oh.
So we've, we worked to resolve that. Every year, we go out at springtime at 1:00 in the morning, we flip open manhole covers and we kind of observe and try to understand where's the water coming from and pinpoint the locations that we think there, there may be breaches. And over time, we've done pretty good. But that's the challenge that we face is trying to, and we'll be hiring cameras and so forth. And we pick it a little bit away every year.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Again, Andrew, Hannah, thank you guys so much. Thank you too, Chris, for chiming in with the details and we answering the questions. And I think, you know, it sounds like with, along with everyone else, I'm really looking forward to seeing the, you know, rate options that can encourage conservation and looking forward to this next piece coming together.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate your attention, time and input.
Does anyone have any other business they want brought up tonight before we adjourn for the evening?
I would move to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Trustee Taylor, I second.
All right. We have a motion and a second.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee apt.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yeah.
Mayor Pretend Baumhofer.
Hi.
Trustee Corvallin.
Yes.
Trustee Cooms Ismael.
Yes, ma'am.
Meeting adjourned at 8:09 PM. Have a good one, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.